This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, we're going to call to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for November 22nd at 6 o'clock. Could everybody stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance first?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any open time for the public, anybody that is here to talk about anything that is not on the agenda? Anyone? No?
Oh yeah.
Well, just because I know this might end up being long, and I'll say it at the beginning, just wishing everybody a happy Thanksgiving from the Select Board to all those that are here and those that are listening. We hope everybody has a safe and pleasant time with family and friends and enjoys the ooh, the long weekend. Yes, you need to move that microphone.
Tammy Alunis, 298 College Highway, on behalf of the Southampton Historical Society. The 2023 calendars have come in and they will be mailed out to members and we will be all three of the toy drives selling them. You can also pick them up at the package store over in Westfield.
Very good, thank you.
They're $15.
All right. If no other comments for the public here, let's get into our agenda. We have first a public hearing on our tax rate classification. So I'm going to, at this point, open up the public hearing for the tax rate classification and I'll call Dave Zagorski to the podium. Yes, to the podium and just tell us who you are and give us a little rundown in terms of what your, what this is all about.
All right, I'm Dave Zagorski. I am the interim principal assessor for the town of Southampton. The purpose of this classification is to, for the Select Board to determine the option of a single or split tax rate, open space discount, residential exemption, and small commercial exemption. I'm just going to kind of go over the bullet points because it's fairly lengthy. The Select Board must decide the percentages of the tax levy that each class of real property and personal property will bear. To do so, residential factor is adopted. The residential factor is governed, governs the percentage of the tax levy to be paid by Class 1 residential and Class 2 open space properties. The difference is shifted to Class 3 commercial, Class 4 industrial and personal property. Single tax rate, there's no, no change in the levy with, between split tax rate or single tax rate. Basically, a split tax rate just determines, it puts more of the burden on commercial, industrial, and personal properties, property. Shifting the tax burden does not increase revenue, it merely shifts the burden to other taxpayers. With such a small, commercial, industrial, and personal property base in town, it is, it is of no advantage to adopt a split tax rate. It may detract from new businesses moving to town. And I don't think the town has ever done a split tax rate, if I'm not mistaken. Regarding open space discount, the town of Southampton has no property that meets the definition of, definition of open space. Therefore, there are no properties in this class to adopt an open space discount. As far as the residential exemption, only 16 of the 351 communities in Massachusetts currently have adopted the residential exemption. They tend to be communities with a large number of apartment buildings, such as Boston and Brookline, or a large number of second homes, such as Barnstable, Tisberry, Nantucket. Adopting a residential exemption increases the residential tax rate. The amount of the levy paid remains the same, but it is distributed over less assessed value. And the small commercial exemption, only 14 of the 351 communities in Massachusetts currently have adopted the small commercial exemption. Adopting the small commercial exemption increases the commercial and industrial rates. The levy paid by those two classes remain the same, but because of the exempted valuation, it is distributed over less assessed value. This higher rate creates a shift that reduces the taxes paid by owners of properties occupied by small businesses and shifts them to larger commercial and industrial taxpayers such as Big Y and could drive them out. So that's my presentation.
Maybe if you wouldn't mind, just for people that are listening at home, just read through the, the class and the total value section there.
Sure. For fiscal '23, values are as follows. The residential total value is 921,581,006, which is 93.66% of the town. No open space. Commercial value is 33,439,594, which represents about 3.3% of the town. Industrial value is 7.6 million or 0.77%. And personal property is 21,312,726, which translates to 2.16%.
Okay. All right, good. How about questions from, so I take it, well, first of all, I gather you're just recommending again that we just do a single tax rate?
Yes.
That's the recommendation of the Board of Assessors?
Yes, it is.
Any questions from the Select Board itself?
If we did the single tax rate, what would the tax rate be?
We don't know that right now because all the information isn't entered into the Gateway System. Bradley, the accountant, is still entering his information as far as receipts and everything. And the town vote still needs to be put into the system as well to determine what the tax rate is.
This is not the final step in saying?
No, this is not the final step. This is just a step in the process.
And just so you know, the town accountant says he's about 75% through entering all that information, but also the Gateway was down all day today and he couldn't get access to it along with the DOR and DLS email system.
That's always helpful. Okay. All right. Any other questions from Select Board itself? Or anyone in the audience have any questions about this tax rate?
I'll make a motion to approve a single tax rate for FY '23. And forego the other dispensing exemptions.
I'll second.
Just for clarification, is the motion the one that's written up for us?
It should be.
Oh, okay, I didn't see that one. But that makes sense.
No, we recommend single tax.
Hang on, do we have further? Is that in the packet?
Yes, it is.
Want me to read it? Do you guys have further?
Yeah, yeah, we're good.
Okay. Don't want to cut you off, okay, ready, yes, go ahead, please. All right, I'll move that the Select Board to vote in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, as amended the percentage of local tax levy which will be borne by each class of real and personal property relative to the setting for fiscal year '23 tax rates and set the residential factor at 1 with the corresponding CIP shift of 1, pending approval of the town's annual tax recap by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Second, all right. If no further discussion, are we ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. All opposed? Nay. All right, so we are all in favor. Five, five to zero.
All right, thanks. Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, and thanks for all the work at the Assessor's Office.
Thanks for seeing.
I know I may have missed this, but did the board vote to close the public hearing?
Not yet.
Okay.
Not yet, I'll get there. So, okay, so we, we have the vote and yes, now I'll take a motion to close the hearing, the public hearing.
So we'll move. I'll second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that public hearing is closed. Thank you. Moving on to the next one that was supposed to be happening, which is the EverSource Poll Hearing. It was continued from our last meeting. This was N-Star Electric doing business as EverSource Energy for 11 midspan polls along Lead Mine Road.
And you're actually going to have to hold on for about six minutes on that.
Yeah. They're coming?
Oh, no.
Because it's publicized for 6:15. Gosh. We'll come back to it?
Sure.
Okay, we'll come back to that. All right. I didn't realize the timing on that, sorry. We were quicker than I thought. Okay, we will come back to that one in case they appear on time. All right. We have no presentations, we have no reports to Select Board itself from other, other committees tonight. How about the Town Administrator Report?
Sure. Just to let you know, we are in the process of applying for the renewal of our underground storage tank insurance coverage for the diesel tank at the Highway Garage. We will be working with Melanson to find a mutually agreeable date for the Select Board and the Finance Committee to have a joint meeting for a presentation from them on the fiscal year '21 audit. Let's see. We did have a kickoff meeting with Final Site for our new website design and implementation. We have started to look at some of the themes and color combinations which they offer in templated form to start that redesign process. Bradley and I have, have a scheduled interview with a qualified candidate for the Assistant Town Accountant position next week. And Chief Fillingworth let us know today that he had applied for and received the Acceptance Award for the State 9/11 Grant in the amount of $30,807. I received word from our elevator vendor today that due to a change in the state's interpretation of the elevator codes, that our elevator will now be out of compliance with how it is supposed to run under the fireman's emergency key and that we are being told that the necessary repairs are $10,000 and that they are supposed to be completed by December 31st, 2022. I will be following up with the state on this new requirement as it seems to be a very short timeline to come into compliance. And just to confirm, the town did close on the 354 College Highway property for the purposes of affordable housing last Monday, November 14th. And then upcoming Select Board meetings, December to be determined, and special town meeting Tuesday, December 13th at the William Norris Elementary School at 7:00 PM.
Okay. Any questions, Vin?
Yeah, F sounds very unreasonable.
Yeah.
But I'm just wondering, what does that mean, the fireman's emergency key?
There's an actual key for a fireman's emergency to open and close the doors on the elevator for the operation. And now the state has, according to the vendor, has said that some elevators, the way that that key operates and the elevator is indoors or allowed to work, doesn't really meet what is in the state codes.
But by the same token, we had an elevator inspection recently and passed, right?
Right.
Correct.
So they come back afterwards when they learn what the codes were and tell us that now it doesn't pass?
Well, that's why I want to talk to the state.
Yeah.
Well, they're not saying it doesn't pass, they're saying that it won't be in compliance after December 31st.
Oh, okay. Can I ask about the Gateway software? Then you said it wasn't working?
Correct.
Okay. Is that a result of problems here or?
That was issues at DOR, DLS.
Okay, so it has nothing to do with our installation?
They did a release on it, it was in connection with Google. If you were trying to access it through Google, you couldn't get through it, but if you went on Firefox or any of the other apps, you could get access to Gateway today.
Okay. Yeah. Can we decide on the select meetings? Can we look at dates?
Yes. Yep. Any other questions? If not, let's like, take a look at the, just the dates for December meetings. I think it should be pretty, pretty evident. Two weeks out from today would be December 6th. December 13th is a special town meeting and then the next one would be December 20th. Does anybody have any objections to December 6th or December 20th?
No, but we also usually have a short meeting right before the town meeting.
Correct.
So would that be a second?
I don't know that we.
I have reserved the library at Norris School for that.
The day of the 13th?
Yeah, and it won't be available before 6, so.
At 6 o'clock, right. Right, so December 6th and December 20th for our regular scheduled meetings, right? Keep in order. And then December 6th, we will meet at 6 o'clock at the library at Norris right before the special town meeting. Okay, everybody okay? All right.
What was the last thing, December?
Sorry? December 6th and 20th will be our regular meetings?
Okay.
Yep. So that will be fine. Okay. How about a couple of Select Board reports? John, do you have something?
Well.
Okay, we're at 6:15. Thank you for watching the clock. We'll put that at 6:15. Anyway, all right. Okay, let me go back to what I was misconstruing here. All right, so at this point, it's 6:15 and as advertised, we are going to open the public hearing, which is a poll hearing continuance with N-Star Electric doing business as EverSource Energy. And I do not see anyone from EverSource present. So?
Assuming you had some conversation with them?
They have not responded.
We sent them registered return receipt letters. We did not hear anything back from them and actually did not, have not received the green cards from those back yet either.
Did we have to pay to put a notice in the paper, did they?
We don't, for this, we don't have to put a notice in the paper.
Yeah. All right, so I think at this point, we probably need to have a motion to continue yes, yet again, this poll hearing until our next meeting?
So moved.
Well, I, I mean, my only thing, if there's not a motion on the floor. My concern is there are residents who came out two weeks ago who are here again.
I know.
EverSource must, I mean, we didn't put this on the agenda willy-nilly. They must have asked for it. We've now gone two weeks, we're here, they're not. Residents are here, they have concerns. I'm assuming they have the same concerns they expressed two weeks ago, which remain unanswered. So therefore, out of respect, I would move that we close the public hearing and we notify EverSource officially in writing a cease and desist, stop all activity until you get your act together and you want to come before us. You asked for this hearing, we scheduled it two weeks ago, it's here tonight. Citizens are continuing to come forward to have their voices heard because they can't reach anybody at EverSource. But we could push it off for another two weeks and hope they show up before Christmas. I mean, it could be a miracle.
All right, so that, that's a motion I'm hearing on the floor. Does anybody?
It's just a suggestion. I don't know what everybody else is.
I agree with that, but I just want to say that it's very unusual. I don't think, I don't think that's ever happened in the time that I've been on the Select Board. So it's not common, but it's still unfair.
Yeah, definitely so. All right, so that's a possible discussion point. Joy, any thoughts on that?
No, I agree with that.
And I'm just going to say this, by continuing it, you don't put any more burden or work on anyone in my office. By not continuing it and denying it means they're going to have to apply again and someone in my office is going to have to go through all the steps of making out the cards, sending out the cards, and scheduling this. So.
Okay.
But when this was rescheduled from last meeting to this meeting, you had communication with them?
We tried and they did not answer.
They don't answer?
So that we continued it.
I mean by mail, but I mean you have no personal contact with the people who come here and make presentations to us.
Did we, can I ask through the chair, did we attempt to reach our liaison? Did we send an email to our liaison and ask him?
We did not. I can do that next time.
So I guess because there are residents here, maybe we should ask them what a justifiable window of time would be? Or if they have anything else to add before we make a decision?
Right, I know they had questions last time about how this was going to affect them.
They're going to come before we, you know?
I think that would be, you know, that would be wise. I mean, when we sent out the, the letters this time, we assumed that we were going to get responses back before the meeting and they didn't, didn't come in. So we had continued the hearing from the last meeting. Okay, and so that's why it ended up on the agenda because it's the next meeting. We said that we would have to continue it too.
Yeah, and I, and I understand picking a point in time. So I would say, again, I, I look to the, to the residents, to the voters that are here and if they're comfortable trying to do this again in two weeks, great. If they want to go out four weeks, we pick the date. We tell EverSource, this is the date, this is your third attempt. And we postpone until then. But then at that point, regardless of how much work this may cause on other departments, we just need to end and move on.
Yeah. And I think last time, if, if I'm not mistaken, we had asked the folks, I know you folks were here last time, that we had asked to leave your contact information so that we could, we could let you know that. So I think that's probably the best order too, that once we have confirmation, we would let you know that it's worthwhile for you to come. Was that okay with you guys? Yeah? Is there anybody else here for that? No? Just for those, you, you two are the main people that were here last time? Okay.
And just for procedure-wise, do we have to pick a date or can we motion to continue the public hearing until a uncertain date in the future?
No, it should be to a date and time certain.
Okay.
Plus they're going to want to, I mean, with weather and ground freezing, you can't imagine they're going to want to do it sooner than later.
Right. I mean, I would favor moving it until December 6th and let us get confirmation from them through reaching out to our rep.
Yeah.
Then once we have confirmation that someone is coming, we will reach out to the residents who've been here to let them know that. So I would move that we continue the hearing until the next meeting if that's possible within, and agreeable with everybody and we appreciate your, your time and effort to come.
Do you have your contact information?
No, if you leave me your contact information before you go, I'd appreciate it.
So is your motion, Chris, to continue until December 6th or 6:15?
That would be my motion to continue.
I'll second it.
All right, okay. Any further discussion on that?
And the time?
6:15.
Let's do 6:15 again. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Any opposed? All right. If not, so the motion is to continue this to December 6th at 6:15. Could I have a motion to close this public hearing?
So moved. I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Public hearing for EverSource is closed. Thank you very much.
Technically, it's continued. You don't close it.
Sorry?
Come on, Matt and Chair. Be a long night.
Okay, so it's continued to?
December 6th at 6:15 PM.
Right, but I'm closing the hearing tonight, no? I'm not, I'm continuing it.
You're continuing.
My apologies. Okay, I'll get it right eventually. Maybe? All right. Okay, let's go to Select Board reports. John?
Sure. Select Board reports, PPPB did meet and as you can see by the half of the third page of the agenda, that'll all be coming up later on tonight, so I'll defer on that. Finance did meet, I did meet, or I did participate in the Finance meeting. And just a couple of high-level key takeaways, although they did not meet quorum, they did have a meeting, in this particular meeting, the town accountant and the town administrator were there. I know the accountant was invited in to talk and they had a healthy conversation between the town accountant and the Chair of Finance about what the Chair saw as some potential issues in closing out the books to look at. And I thought that that all went very favorable and was well-received and it was a good interchange between the two. What was surprising to me was the town accountant acknowledged, and you can go to the video if you want to watch this, that while receipts are in up till June 30th, they have, they are at a standstill as of February on the reconciliations because there was a variance being carried forward, I want to say $250, that now went to $1,200. They are attempting to find that. And until they find that, they won't continue on with March, April, May, or June of the reconciliations. So packets are in, receipts are in, but reconciliations aren't in, which will be a point that I'll circle back to later on under other business. But overall, I thought the meeting was, was very well-received and I thought everyone's working well together and just pointed out some things they need to address going forward.
Yeah.
Can I just ask you a question? Did you say they did proceed with the sequential months or they didn't?
No, because the reconc, right, you have to, so, and my understanding is that was something that Bradley discovered earlier on in the day, so he hadn't had time. His next steps were to go back and try to drive down to that, which I imagine is the corresponding paperwork that's there with the Treasury to find it. There may be an update between now and when that meeting happened, but, you know.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? That's it?
That's it.
All right. Francine?
Yes, very short. The only meeting I attended or attempted to attend was the Zoning Board of Appeals on November 12th. And the meeting had to be continued because they didn't have a quorum and that's it.
Okay.
CBC hasn't had a meeting. The Board of Assessors just met at 4 o'clock today. As you know, we did the tax classification. Also, there's an article in the special town meeting warrant to move money within the lines in order to hire contractors for cyclic inspections. You met Dave Zagorski and unfortunately, there haven't been applicants as of yet. He continues to do a temporary 15, up to 15-hour a week position. They're reviewing and signing off on exemptions for folks that are blind, veterans and seniors. And the next meeting is Tuesday, December 7th at 4:00. COA hasn't met, the next meeting is December 7th at 4:00 by Zoom. The Public Safety Building Committee met on the 14th. As you know, there were no responses to the RFQ, so the meeting was basically mostly to discuss that. It's going back up to be available. There's a new timeframe, there's a broader submission requirements to try to sort of get more firms to submit paperwork. And it's expected to be posted again on the 28th of November. The next meeting is also the 28th of November. We are recruiting a new member for the Public Safety Building Committee, hopefully somebody who has a background in engineering or architecture, Sarah Stein. Our Chair is moving out of town and so we are also electing a new Chair to the committee at the next meeting and recruiting another member, at-large member. And then the COA Building Feasibility Committee meeting met last Thursday. We had a presentation by Abacus of the results from that very well-attended November 10th input program. So they're in the process of putting together PowerPoint with data on what folks said they want, also design for a center and sites. They're doing a deeper dive into the four remaining sites, 1, 2, 3, 4 remaining sites. Actually, there's six of them, but two of them are probably going to be not viable. But right now, we're just waiting till all the data comes in. Their next meeting is on the 1st of December at noon by Zoom.
Okay. All right. Good.
I have a question in regards to the Public Safety Committee and getting another member. Were there more than enough applicants that we had to pick and choose? I'm just wondering if there's any one who didn't, you know, we didn't appoint that might still be out there who would be interested?
Yeah, actually, I think there was between two people for the at-large position. I think one of them, you know, was an engineer and she's still on the committee. But yeah, there was another person, I think that his background might have been in building. So I think he's a regular member of the senior center, we can certainly get the word out about that. Yeah.
Could I just make a comment? Several of us from the Select Board were at the seniors' center input session and I just want to remark, we had great attendance, we had about 70 people there. But the sad part of it is the capacity of that room was 75. So with 2,200 seniors in the town, I'm not saying everybody participates, but I'm just trying to put it into proportion and perspective about one of the reasons why a new senior center needs to be considered. Because it's, it was a very nice turnout, but you can see the limited use of the space that we have available.
Good, thanks. Okay. If nothing else, Joy?
Sure. The Housing Authority met November 14th. They, we went over the language of the Housing Trust Bylaw, which we'll review later in the meeting. Their next meeting is December 12th. Planning Board met, they discussed the, I'm sorry. They discussed the detached accessory dwelling zoning bylaw, they're going over those some more. And multifamily dwelling bylaw in regards to in-commercial or slash, or commercial/highway zones. That was a, a pretty interesting conversation if you want to go and review that meeting. And they're also looking at getting another DLTA grant to continue doing the work on the, the bylaws. And their next meeting is December 7th at 7:00 PM in Town Hall. To know, just specifically, they were discussing having detached accessory dwellings do not need to be owner-occupied, which I thought is, is a shift to try to create more, you know, options for housing within town if they want to rent out a space or, et cetera. In regards to Conservation Commission, they're waiting for 50-foot-bag bog bridges to be built in the Manhan Meadows. And then I, I sent an email earlier this, or yesterday in regards to some issues on Zipta Barn with some debris. My understanding is they notified the Fletcher's on November, November 13th. So they may just need a little more time, in fact, to remove the debris. But I will follow up with the Fletcher's, if that's okay with the Board, in regards to the Conservation Commission's concerns. They're just concerned that it's on-town property and they don't want anyone, you know, hurting themselves on the debris or who knows.
And this is, just to be clear, this is debris from redoing some of the doors?
From redoing the door, they did. From redoing the door, they did, yeah, they redid the entire front barn door and ripped that off, and the new door just has primer, so they also were looking for a deadline, or a date for when the painting would be done. So I can follow up with the Fletchers in regards to just dates, I think that's what the board is looking for. Their next meeting is December 5th at 6:00 PM, and open space hasn't met, but their first meeting, their next meeting is December 1st at 6:00 PM.
Anything else?
Yeah, just a point on that, it's interesting to me that for two of the projects, being the side door and the roof, the conservation commission came to the select board for permission. This is the first I'm hearing, other than seeing, about anything on the front of the barn or debris, so there seems to be, shall we say, a dual path here, so I would probably also like to see what agreement they had with the Fletchers for doing any work on the front of the barn.
Okay.
So, Chris?
John?
So I guess that's, I mean, I'm not opposing any of this, I just, I'm assuming that conservation outlined some sort of standards or protocol, and I was just surprised that if there appears to be a violation that, that's coming back to the select board to reach out, that, is it because it's public property? And is the barn public property?
Yes.
It's conservation.
It's conservation property.
So it's their property, they have control and custody of it, and they want us to go to?
However, the select board issued the, shall we say, the lease on that Zipta Barn?
Okay.
So that's kind of why I brought up, okay, are there, you know, specifications, conditions? Were they in writing? In this particular case, it did not come back to the select board to say, we would like to have them do this, is it okay with you, and we could look at specifications or whatever and say, yeah, this makes sense.
Also, they literally just reached out to them on the 13th.
Yeah.
So it hasn't been very long to get that done. Yeah, no, they basically leased the barn to put in their, store their hay in there.
Yeah, I just, I mean, just giving, in the past 30 days, the other items that have arisen, we should attach these, attack these things consistently, you know, if we handled the bridge one way, we handled the dam a different way, and now it seems like the barn's going a different way, too. I mean, the committee should act independently without select board input.
And in this particular case, I just want to make it clear that I feel bad, I think the liaison, the select board liaison to the CONCOM actually ended up getting caught in the middle of this, so not my intent.
I'm fairly certain that that liaison nor I were on the select board that approved that lease, so I defer to the other three ladies here.
Yeah, I think simply, you know.
That preceded my time, so that's over five and a half years.
Yeah, that's a long time ago.
But yeah, no, I have no objection if you would like to just reach out and just check in with the Fletchers and see what their timeframe is, I think that would be fine, just informally, or via email or whatever would work. I mean, I assume any kind of painting is going to wait until the spring, but cleaning up of debris probably ought to happen, and that's, debris means just from the picture, it looked like it was just boards that had come off, so I'm assuming there were rotten boards on the side of the barn at some point in time. Okay, all right, anything else there?
Nope, that's all, thank you.
I've got a couple of small things from my committees. The chairs of the select board from all the five towns gathered up at Hampshire Regional last week to be, to be part of the discussion of what would, who would be the representative for the five towns in the union negotiations with the teachers' negotiations that are starting, and we agreed amongst ourselves that it would be the select board chair from, is he the chair, is he the chair actually of select board? I'm not sure.
He's not chair.
He's not chair, he's on the school committee already, but he's from West Hampton, so he's a representative of the select board from West Hampton, and he's going to be the representative for the five towns during the negotiation. Okay, so that takes us out of that negotiation middle part, and we'll get some information, I'm assuming, on that at some point in time. On the grant committee, we've been working really hard with Randall, Ian, and Aliza, and managed to put in the Safe Roots to Schools infrastructure grant request, which is a, would be a five-year project coming in at 1.3 million, and this is to put in a shared-use path from Route 10 up past the school to Gun Road Extension, and put in a couple of crosswalks, and also make a pull-off zone, a small driveway to the south end of Nora School to relieve the pickup-drop-off line, so it's kind of a three-phase approach, and we'll see. We were encouraged to put it in by the folks at MassDOT. We will get some preliminary feedback in the first week, first 10 days of January to know whether we're even in the mini pool of applications, so if so, that could be something very interesting. But that would continue where we've left off with the shared-use path on Route 10, going up past the school, getting another portion perhaps done. And part of this started out as requests from parents in the neighborhood about the unsafe situation for their kids to cross Palmer Meadow to get to the school, and as you have seen, the current sidewalk, it's only about four feet wide, telephone poles in the middle of it, it's not bikeable, it's very, very challenging for anybody to manipulate, basically, so we'll have our fingers crossed, but that's, that was a big, big project, and we did the best we could, guesstimating budgets from other projects in the neighborhood, and Randall was some magical formulas that he was able to put together through, again, other guidance we got from Safe Roots to Schools examples. So we'll see how we turn out with that. There are other grants coming up, we've got to get a meeting probably in early December and just check in on one, the One Stop Grant, I believe, is opening up again, and a couple of others, Mass Trails is open again, so we've got, this is the time when a lot of grant applications, grant programs send out their notices, so we'll have to see what we're going to try and tackle or not coming forth. I think we still have some energy left, but, all right, other than that.
What is the timeframe on the teachers' contract?
I don't know the teachers' contract, I don't know much about it.
The one she, the one, the chair was, that's Hampshire Regionals.
Hampshire Regionals, yeah. Right, but I know, are we talking about retro, I mean, have they already surpassed their?
No, no, I believe that, no, they have not, I believe all five contracts expire on June 30th.
Okay, all right, all right, moving on, we have appointments and resignations.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignation of Sarah Stein from both the public safety building committee and the planning board, and thank her very much for her service to both those committees.
Yes, indeed, okay. Can I have a second? Second, okay, all right, yeah, and according to her letter, she's going to be moving out of town next month, so she's putting in, at least to us anyway, her resignation, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Francine seconded that.
Okay, thanks. And just to be clear, the town clerk has not received a letter from Sarah Stein for the planning board piece, and that's an elected office, so.
So that needs to happen.
Did you get the one from public safety building committee? I'll forward it to you right now, I guess.
I received an email.
Oh, you need a separate letter than an email?
I just received a letter saying I'm going to be leaving the public safety.
Okay, is that, is that enough, though?
That is enough for an appointed position, yes.
Not for planning board?
Okay, I know, I saw an email that you had already sent to Sarah, telling her that she needs to.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so that'll be from both the building committee and the planning board? Okay, that's been accepted with regret.
And then, just to remind the select board that that will cause a vacancy on the planning board, which can be appointed by a joint meeting of the planning board members and the select board members if anyone comes forward, which would go until the next annual town meeting, and I forget what the date in May is, but it's the 3rd Tuesday of 2023. Thank you.
All right, all right, good, thanks for that. All right, that's the only business there, under new business, let's decide on our early closing before Thanksgiving, since we're sitting right upon that date. Ed, is there a proposal that has come forth or what we've usually done? I'm thinking it's been around a half a day's worth of?
It's usually been around half a day's worth, so, you know, I would say, you know, somewhere around 12:30.
Any thoughts?
Discussion, so this is also the first year where we have at least three or four department heads are required to work on Fridays, from 8 to noon, I don't see that before us, so are we thinking that everyone gets a half-day on Wednesday, but those individuals, one of whom being an elected official, are going to be here on Friday? It's the first time it's come up.
Unless we take vacation or personal days, at least for the non-elected individuals.
Just pointing it out, because someone's going to ask, actually, someone's already asked the question, so.
All right, so do you have a suggestion there, or?
Oh no, I leave it the way it is.
Okay.
The schedule is the schedule.
Schedule is.
Because here, if it's routine to have this vote, then why aren't we just working it into the handbook? Always close early on the Wednesday before, why does it always have to be?
Because the day, not this day, but other holidays like this.
But specifically, I'm talking about the Wednesday, before Thanksgiving, why is it always, because we did this last year.
Yeah.
Less than 24 hours notice this comes up, and I guarantee Christmas Eve's going to come up.
Well, it won't.
Well, Christmas is.
Christmas is on a Sunday, so.
You say not, but other people have the ability to bring items forward to us.
I think the people that are working on Friday, they're department heads, and I would defer this decision to the building supervisor, town administrator, and department heads. I don't know why we have to decide, I think this should be decided by the department heads and town administrator.
For Friday?
You know what the contracts are, I mean, in the past, there were difficulties, but I think that is no longer part of the union contract, it says, there was some reason why it was a concern, and I think that concern is no longer present in the contract, in one of the contracts, correct?
I don't remember anything about any concerns.
Isn't there a financial obligation? If we close Town Hall early, that DPW goes on time and a half?
That would have been for snow and ice, and that no longer exists.
But there was, there was a, in a contract, there was a financial liability to the decision, and it was across the board, if it was like it happened to one department, then everybody, I forgot what it was, but it's no longer, I know that part. So I would defer to what you and the department heads, I don't know what other people think.
Well, let's have a motion to something that we can vote upon here. Did we clarify that we want to close a half-day before?
Ed, do you want to propose a time, 12:30?
I propose that the departments close at 12:30 on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, which I believe is May 23rd.
November 23rd.
November 23rd.
There we go, November 23rd, yeah.
All right.
All right, I'll make a motion that for, that the building would close 12:30 on the 23rd of November.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right.
What was it last year? Was it 1?
I don't remember, to be honest with you.
It's, I think it's always been somewhere 12:30, 1 o'clock time. Yep, okay, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay.
Can we look at sooner rather than later for the benefit of employees of the other holidays coming up? Not necessarily tonight, but I think that should be addressed.
Yeah, we can certainly, we can certainly put it, I mean.
Not so close to the holiday.
It is a non-issue for either.
Christmas and New Year's?
Christmas Eve or New Year's Eve, because Christmas and New Year's fall on a Sunday, therefore, the day before is a Saturday, everyone is on.
Okay.
So if I can just bring the, bring the point back up about Friday, the day after Thanksgiving, so we have an elected official who's free to do whatever they want, we have a town administrator who may have tipped his hand and said he's going to use personal time or vacation time to go, we have a contracted employee, so I guess if he doesn't bill us, he doesn't have to be here, and then we have an hourly employee. Right, the town accountant's hourly.
Who's hourly?
Town accountant, he submits his hourly timesheets, he's not salaried.
So do I, but I'm not hourly. The town accountant is salaried.
So those, the town accountant yourself and the elected official are free to do what they want, show up on Friday or not show up on Friday, to be clear.
If, well, if we don't show up on Friday, it means we have to take a personal or vacation day.
Okay.
Sounds good, sounds fine to me.
All right, any other discussion on that? All right, I think that's understood, moving forward. We have on the agenda, I don't know if we're ready to do this, we had brought up the select board fee schedule last time, showing that it had not been reviewed since 2015, we wanted to update it, and we had asked that the weights and measures also be added to that, and I gather these are the new proposed weights and measures, Ed, is that?
No, these are the existing ones.
These are the existing ones, okay, so we still need to determine whether we want to make changes in this.
We will have to make changes to make the revolving fund whole on the weights and measures.
Okay.
So I will work on a, shall we say, suggested weights and measures fees for your next meeting.
All right, and what about any of the other, the alcohol licensing and all these other fees, do those, do those need any adjusting, or? You want to take a look at the entire bunch, or just the weights and measures for us?
Well, I know the weights and measures has to be adjusted, just because of what we're going to be required to pay under the new state contract. These, they really have to do a time study on the time it takes my administrative assistance to do them.
Yeah, okay, I think there's two others that we probably need to have on here, which is going with the new bylaw for soliciting and canvassing. Ian, you've got an application fee in the, in the new bylaw for both the soliciting entity as well as the people going door-to-door, and so there's, I believe it was $50 for the entity and 25 for each person who's actually soliciting, so that would be, as the bylaw's written, it says per fees established by, by select board, I believe, so we'd probably have to put them here, too, I would assume.
Well, if it's being issued by the police department, why would it fall under the select board fee schedules? I might say that the select board needs to approve them, but I, my opinion would be that they should fall under police fee schedule.
Okay, if there is a separate police fee schedule, I don't know, it's not a fine, it's a P. Ian, got a thought on that? I mean, if there was just one place to have these, that was the main thing.
We currently don't have any, Ian, you're the police chief, we currently in the police department don't have any fee schedule for, it's set, whether it's for firearms record, firearms licenses, that's a fee set by the state, and then obviously, we had a no soliciting bylaw to begin with, so we have nothing for that.
Yeah, so there's nothing published as a fee schedule for the police department?
No.
To get a permit for anything?
No, because we don't issue any permits besides the ones that are state governed.
So the new, first little permit, or not even a permit, but the application?
Application would be.
Will be for soliciting and canvassing, so.
It makes some sense just to not have a separate fee schedule to put them in here.
Yeah, so I think it'd go into this, something here called other, I think we could put it in there, or?
Yeah, there is that category.
Something we could put it under.
Yeah.
Or maybe make it just clear what it is, but, yeah, okay, all right, so you're going to work on that for the next meeting, then?
Yes.
All right. Okay, revenue and expense reports, revenue, is this, are these both up to?
Says here 11/17.
17th?
Well, I know the expense is up to 11/17.
Revenue report says 11/17.
Also. Because it looks like.
I didn't think they were that far, they can't be that far ahead.
I wouldn't think that they would be the same.
From the last time.
I was talking with Jen today, and she was entering September packets.
Yeah, okay, so revenue's probably the usual month and a half or so behind, they're about six weeks behind.
Correct.
Because right now, it's showing 4.5 million in actual revenue, right, on general fund, and then?
So that's based on how many months?
We don't know, and then the expense?
July, August, September, oh well, maybe only. First quarter, that seems, seems low, then.
I don't think the expenses are up to date.
And the expenses are for what would be last Thursday.
And the reason I say that is because I know it's going to come up later with the Board of Health. Last, two weeks ago, we received invoices that we were told were submitted for payment, so they've gone through the accountant's office, and the cumulative of those invoices, there's no way they fall under that $2,300.
Has the select board given the town administrator and town accountant the direction not to deficit spend?
Yes.
Yes, therefore?
Adam Chair, if I may, I ask point blank, two weeks? Madam Chair, if I may, I ask point blank, two weeks ago, were these invoices paid? And you represented to me that they were. Later, when we looked at it, you said possibly the third one for 3,000 something hadn't been, but the other one had gone through.
There's one on the warrant for tonight. It's in the package of warrants.
So if it's in the warrant, it's been paid. It's in the process of being paid, because we get the warrants well after the checks have been cut.
That's true. Okay.
Or am I, am I wrong? Are we cutting checks and holding them in a drawer? But even if we were, the number would be on here, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
All right.
Can I ask a question about the revenue?
Yes, let's go back to revenue for a second.
Hazard mitigation program. It's, is $88,958.20.
Where is that, René Sarns?
Is that, that's on, I don't know, it's on the revenue report, the not paid, oh, yes, page five, I'm sorry. On page five. Of the revenue.
Hazard mitigation program, right.
Is that a grant that was received?
That's
It is.
That's not our new one for the, it's not the new one for the update.
I believe.
Is that left over from when we did the hazard mitigation plan? Because we paid Fosse and O'Neill for that. I was just curious to know.
I don't believe so.
What's, why, what's that still sitting there for?
I believe this is, some of the programs are now starting to give the money upfront, so I will have to check on this.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Yeah. Yeah. But at this point in time, it, I don't believe it's related to the new hazard mitigation plan update award that we were just.
It wasn't that much money, huh?
No, it was much smaller than that. It's like 25, 30,000 maybe, at the most, I think. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, and I think you can just remember to keep that on the agenda.
Yep. Okay, so that's on the revenue side. So back onto
Expense.
Expense side. The, picking up on John's point here, we have health agent wages. We have
The Board of Health expenses. Right, they were only budgeted 3,000. They've already spent 2,755, which potentially could be that first invoice that came in for the consultant. But that second invoice, which I want to say was either September, October, was for like $3,400.
Thirty-three.
Yep.
And has not been processed.
So there's one for 1,900 that has been processed.
That was the, that was the first one, and then there was some payment while Nicole was still in that position.
Okay.
Under the wage, I know, right. That payment to Nicole would have come under the wages.
Right, all right, you're right. Hundred.
Under wages, right.
Yes.
Okay, so there's still an outstanding invoice from the temporary interim, whatever, health agent to be paid that has not been paid. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes.
Okay. So that shows.
Can I ask a couple of questions about the expenses?
Yep.
Town clerk expenses are at 98.65%. Is that a concern at all? And Select Board expenses are, we should be around 42%, if this is accurate, up to 11/17.
Some of this is probably membership, or?
Twenty hundred and some odd dollars was at the beginning of the year for the membership to the MMA.
All right.
And I believe that, I can't remember the exact amount, somewhere around $300, I believe, is either on the last warrant or this warrant for the payment of the legal ad for the RFP for the audit services.
Okay. Anybody else, others?
Ambulance fees, I'm assuming that's gonna get rectified, but it's way up in terms of percent increase. Is that gonna be evened out with the town meeting? With fees being, it says here, expense report, ambulance fees. Balance is minus 57,000.
Where are you?
I'm on page
The expense report.
Seven of the expense report, first line. It's 215% over, but is that because we haven't applied the ambulance fees at town meeting yet?
Revised budget, 50,000, actual expended 108,000.
Yeah, I'll have to look at that.
Okay.
Good catch. Thank you.
And then what about all of the, all of those things on page eight? I think they're all, are these the revolving funds? Have they not been applied? I mean, all of them are, balance is negative.
Isn't this a process of closing the books?
It's gotta be, yeah, is some of this gotta figure in the carryover from this past year, or does it not?
Okay, so that's what I was wondering. It just hasn't been carried over yet?
And actually, the other, other thing I'm noticing is that I asked him to do the fiscal year '23, and these are all fiscal year '22, so.
Okay, so he just carried over, but it says 20, oh, this is '22, right?
Right, right. Oh, the date, yeah. The dates are wrong on here. Yeah, sure, fiscal, yeah. Got it. Okay. Any other observations on the expense report so far?
No observations on that, but I mean, I do, I do take the town administrator's point about the directive about not deficit spending, but I think that along those lines, again, this one example that I raised is blatant, because we just saw it two weeks ago, and I know it's gonna come up later, and it's not there, and I get where the principle is coming from, or at least the, the purpose of it, but I also think there needs to be twofold. If there are things being withheld to prohibit deficit spending, I guess my mind, you're not even doing the work or ordering the stuff if the money's not there, but I understand recently we did a roof repair, and then we asked for payment afterwards. I mean, you know, the, the horse is out of the barn, and it's running wild, and we're gonna get control of that, but I guess if there's a running list of items that are triggering this deficit spend, that we need to be made aware of those as well. And again, health department, it's an example because it came up two weeks ago. It's, there's a solution on the table for us to discuss tonight about ARPA funds. That may resolve itself, but you know, is that the only issue that's out there?
That is the only account I am aware of.
Okay.
Okay. I'm good.
Voice paid. Thank you. All right. Nothing else? We'll move on. All right. We'll be down to the we want to, we want to go into the actual special town meeting warrant later on, right? So we're not gonna approve the warrant right now. It's in here on the, on the next agenda item, but should we not go into the ARPA tracker area? Which ARPA's next? We've got a special town meeting warrant articles approval, but.
Correct. Under new business, you want to move that down to the?
I mean, yeah, you can, you can go through the warrant at this point in time. Either accept it, make any amendments to it. What have you at this point?
I think you just need to clarify a couple things, like the one that's in yellow there.
Yeah. That was the fire, fire one, I believe. Oh.
And to be clear, we're going off the new packet that was emailed to us at four o'clock.
Yes, November 21 date.
Or?
November 21 date on it?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, that's the one. And just, before we move on, it's in your.
Right, I had already made notes on the old one, though.
Okay. On the, just to be clear, you'd handed out this, the laws about revolving funds, so that, that ties in with our discussion on the special town meeting? Okay?
Correct.
Gotcha. All right. Let's, let's take a look at what we have here. We have 17 articles.
We have 17 articles, correct.
All right. I hope everybody's had a chance to read them. I know I've gone through and done some editing and typo correction and so forth.
Sorry, Madam Chair. Is the intent that we're gonna go through all this and at the end have one motion?
We would have one vote to approve the, the articles for the town meeting, yes.
Could I just add, since I read this previous, the previous copy of this, I made notes on this, and I sent Ed a couple of edits, so we didn't take too much time on small things, but what's different from the packet that went out late this afternoon and the one that was sent out that stated November 13?
Yeah. The one that is today is November 21. There had been one that was like November 13th or something, yeah. And that's one that I think Ed and I had worked on and went through and cleaned it up with
Correct.
edits and so forth. So you should have hopefully a pretty clean copy, yeah. Everybody should have a pretty clean copy, I think. So if you're noticing things, now's the time to bring them up. I mean, we tried to catch the typos and
Okay.
so forth.
Yeah, Chris came in because when I copied and pasted some of the bylaws, because there had been tracking changes in them, some of the changes actually didn't
Didn't catch.
Didn't come over, so we went through that thoroughly and made a few grammatical changes yesterday.
Okay, so let's just run through fairly quickly. So Article One is transfer for funding for the FY '23 retirement obligation. Anybody see anything there offhand?
And that one's coming from, is that, oh, that's coming from the group health insurance, okay.
This is the
Right, right. They messed up.
The bill where they messed up, and we've gotta make up the $6,000 to pay them, right.
Right.
There was a typographical error in the amount that they had sent us for the one-time payment, which is what we based our budget off.
Right. All right.
Looks good.
Article Two, transfers for the police department operating expenses. Moving, moving funds from the wage and expense account to the police overtime and expense account. I think that one looks pretty clear. Article Three, transfer for ambulance debt. This is the amount of $68,914.80 from ambulance receipts.
And this would cover the last ambulance payment on the newest ambulance that comes due. I believe it's either the end of March or the beginning of April.
So this is the both the principal and the interest on the ambulance itself?
Correct.
That payment, okay. Article Four, transfer for the assessors department operating expenses. This one, I, I think I had a question. It didn't look like, and there, I wasn't sure why they were needing to to add more money to the cyclical inspections. Isn't that? We didn't have enough in there?
The, we, they just talked, we just talked about it today at the Board of Assessors meeting. So the interim assessor is a temporary employee, so he's paid out of the wage line, but it's only up to 15 hours a week. So they have quite a bit of extra money in there, and in order to actually make up the difference on some of the cyclical inspections that, that might be, that would be done, they're moving the money over to be able to contract for those services, because the current person can't do everything that the principal assessor would typically do. So they're moving it over to be a contracted.
Okay. So in the, in the budget, it's 2250 right now for that, and none of that has been spent so far. So they're upping the, the amount on the cyclical.
Right, because they're gonna have a lot to do in the spring.
Got it.
The, the first one, where it says property certification, that has to do with I still haven't come up with a correct term for this. It used to be triennial, it was every three years. This is to keep up with the five-year revaluation that we currently do. The second one is the cyclical 10-year requirement to, over a 10-year period to actually visit every home.
Okay. Any comments on four? No? All right, moving on. Five, transfer for legal settlement, Swanson versus the town of Southampton, $7,500. Anything there?
So that's coming out of our legal
Out of the legal budget.
This is transferred out of our legal expense line item, correct.
That wasn't originally budgeted. Is that, are we fine with that line?
It's, yes, this is what is being recommended by legal counsel right now.
Yeah. What that may mean is that, you know, we've done a chunk of bylaws right now. We may have to slow down on bylaws going forward, because we've got other legal needs probably coming forward, and, you know, we'll have to be more cautious going forward now by taking this money out of there.
Yeah, and if we have another special town meeting, like in the January, February timeframe, free cash will be certified. We could reimburse this account.
Move some money back in, yeah. Yeah, we might need to do.
That would have to be at the annual town meeting, right?
Well, if we have, have another special town meeting in January or February, we could do it then.
Yeah. So there might, there's a possibility of doing that to certify free cash and other things in February, for example, or somewhere around there. Okay, Article Six, Article Six, transfer for health department operating expenses.
And they had originally
Right.
Asked for the entire
Amount.
Amount that's still in there of 10,000
Eighty-six or something.
Eighty-two or eighty-six dollars. If by any chance, and I know they're difficult to find, but if a qualified health agent actually fell out of the sky and was available, if that account was at zero, we wouldn't be able to hire them, so I, I'm suggesting that the Select Board do basically an amount less than that, like 7,000 or 7,500, so it does remain, there is a balance at least in that account if someone did come along, that we could hire them.
So that, what's in here now, just highlighted, is, is 7,000? Yeah, John?
That's why it's ingratiating to call your attention to the, you know, that might be one, you know, the board might like that number, they might want to amend that number, so that's why it's in the gray shading.
And this would care, this $7,000 would carry us until, at the rate.
Hard to know.
We gotta pay the outstanding invoices.
Yeah, I mean, hard to know with the, with my business doing, but.
There's, there's two things going on, and number one, remember, this occurs December 13th. There's also an ARPA application for $20,000 in front of the Select Board, which if the Select Board so chose, could act on it tonight. Those funds would become available, and then we could process any invoices that were being held for the health department expense account.
Yeah, and so there's a possibility of, is everybody comfortable with 7,000 leaving a balance of 25, 3,000, thereabouts, in that lineup? I mean, not taking it down to zero, in other words, whatever that is, because I think that's, that's the worry, is that we don't want to empty it out completely at this moment, but recognizing that there needs to be probably somewhere.
So if, if forced on the issue, I think it's a good compromise, but I kind of take the approach one way or the, it's one or the other. I mean, why, in my view, why am I gonna vote to approve both? So right now, and I know it's later on the agenda, I'm of the mind, leave it zero, and I'd rather, I'd rather take up the ARPA application and see where that goes for the consultant, because if that passes, I'd rather just leave this in the wages. And it either gets spent for the purposes that was budgeted for, or falls out to the bottom and gets certified in free cash. But, you know, if we do the 7,000 there, then are we, and I have no idea what everybody else is thinking, if, if the majority are going to entertain anything from ARPA, are we just gonna say, well, we did seven here, so let's move that 20 down to 13?
No, I, I think, I think they're looking at 20 plus seven.
Well, I don't, I don't know that, so I don't know if it's appropriate to, before we vote on this as a whole, maybe we could pull that one item out and have a conversation with the chair of the health board, just.
Okay. Let's, let's pass.
That's just my take.
Okay, we could do that.
Either way, get it resolved tonight.
Well, we do need, at some point there tonight, we definitely have to vote on the, the slate of
You have to do this.
Articles, but we could hold this for a minute, and then we'll come back around to that and see what we want to do. Okay. Article Seven, transfer building, for the building department, securing and demolition from operational stabilization. So this is $20,000 for the purpose of securing, maintaining, and demolition of other properties for sale by the building department. These are properties that have been attack, acquired through tax title. So that's Article Seven. Any thoughts, comments on that? There's apparently one, if not two, properties that have been.
Didn't we talk about listing the properties, or is that gonna be in the summary that goes out, or identifying which?
It would be in the summary.
Most, it would be in the summary. There were two tax file properties that this was being applied to.
There's two specific ones that the building commissioner has brought to my attention. Doesn't need to be in the actual article or the motion. It might show up in the summary.
Could be in the summary.
Okay. Just somehow letting the voters know which parcels we're talking about.
Yeah. Okay. So Article Eight, we have this one in.
It's all in what would be yellow if I had a color printer, but
Go for it.
And, and John was at the same finance committee meeting that Bradley and I were were invited to, so Vicki had brought up the fact that really, for a one-time mid-fiscal year increase in a revolving fund, as long as it's not a big, big increase and there's some pieces of percentage of tax our tax revenues that this doesn't come close to, but a vote by the finance committee and the Select Board to approve that one-time that one-time mid-year increase would accomplish that. So that's why you have this package in front of you. And on the second page, that third paragraph, you'll see, "In any fiscal year, the limit on the amount that may be spent from a revolving fund may be increased with the approval of the city council and mayor in a city or with the approval of the selectmen..." And I'll just paraphrase, "select board and finance committee, if any, in a town, provided, however, that the 1% limit established by clause four of the third paragraph is not exceeded." So to do that one-time increase doesn't really need to go to...
Town meeting.
A special town meeting. I mean, there's no guarantee, but the select board or the... And the finance committee will approve it in a vote. But it was... Vicki did say that it was the finance committee that had brought that idea up to Chief Orkman. So I don't think that they would be against that.
But at this point in time, the finance committee has not voted on it. Is that my understanding?
Neither has.
There's no quorum.
No quorum to vote, okay. All right, so let's kind of break this out a little bit so we can understand this one. So a one-time increase for $2,000 in the spending cap of the burn permit revolving account. So we've established here that this could be done by a vote of select board and finance committee without having to go to town meeting. Now, the reason for it is a little bit more confusing here. This is this magical...
This grant that just kept on giving.
The grant that kept on giving. Hey, it's one of the... Yeah, this utility, whatever, utility vehicle that is for woods fire rescue, whatever. So we have, through a grant, the fire department acquired this utility vehicle for, I'm thinking it was around $18,000, thereabouts. But in the wisdom of the grant program, they never allowed any kind of a trailer for the grant to be hauled around on and secured within, is my understanding.
Well, technically, if you want to go back to the grant, the police department had put in for, I believe, the UTV. And the fire department had put in for the... Oh, God, what's the term I'm looking for, Ian? Whatever goes on the UTV to either be used as to carry someone in or out of the woods or also like a brush truck to put a tank on.
No, it's a stretcher or something.
Yeah, right. So two applications, two entities. The grant committee from the state granted the one for the piece that goes back on to the UTV, but not the UTV. Fast forward a year later. There was a plan between capital and, shall we say, the use of the revolving brush fund. And that was one of the reasons to increase it from $10,000 to $20,000 at the annual town meeting. That between what they got from capital and what would be in the revolving brush fund, that the fire EMS would purchase the UTV and the trailer to haul it around. However, as we know, between items not being available through the supply side and the, shall we say, inflation on items, the UTV was more expensive and the trailer was more expensive. So currently, and I forget if it was $2,500 or $3,000 that for the UTV that the fire chief paid out of some of their expense accounts to actually get the UTV because it had gone up so much. And then, again, we've gone out twice for quotes on the trailer and they have come in more than is currently in the brush truck revolving fund.
So by allowing this $2,000 increase as a one-time increase in the spending cap, that's enough for him to add to the other monies that have been put aside to actually acquire this? That's what we're trying to do?
Yes.
And then how does the money he took out of the expense account get reimbursed? From the future brush funds?
Well, I'm not even going to say future brush funds. I'm going to say, let's say, once in the brush fund, I'm going to be probably a little more, shall we say, straightforward here, because I don't want to say the D-word. Is, once January comes around, and of course, depending on how the winter is, people may burn in January, they may not. Usually, as you get into the end of February, beginning of March, it gets more popular. We're still in the same fiscal year. So now, let's say, the cap on that is $22,000 instead of $20,000. There's enough in there when we hit probably, and I forget what the quotes were, but probably around 16, 16.5 to acquire the trailer. Now theoretically, say, the revolving fund does go to $22,000. The chief could turn around and say, you know, "I made this work by capital funds and expense account to purchase the UTV." He could go to the accountant and say, "I charged that back in, I don't know, October or September, or whenever it was, the balance of the UTV to X expense account. I really didn't want... I didn't need to do that now. Would you please do a journal entry to take whatever that dollar amount, and I think it's somewhere around $3,000, I'm going from my memory, which you all know is pretty well shot at this point, take that and do a journal entry so that those funds actually came from the brush account rather than my expense account?"
Okay.
Is that clearer, Janeway?
I'm waiting to see how you're going to write the summary on this one.
What concerns me is that the voters...
Well, actually, what I'm hoping is that the select board actually takes this out of the special town meeting warrant.
Oh, okay.
And takes up the avenue to put it in front of the select board for a one-time increase vote to $22,000 and the finance committee to $22,000. And then I won't have to write that summary.
Well, I know we can do that, but the voters of Southampton just increased the increase to $20,000 in this particular revolving account. So for then say, well, you know, then the select board and the finance committee are just going to say, no, it's going to be $22,000. I don't know, I just don't feel that comfortable with that.
Though it's very clear that it's a one-time possibility. And then, once that is done, at what point does it go back down to...
Just one year, I think.
Just for the whole, just this year.
At June 30th, it would go to whatever is, you know, put into the annual town meeting piece.
Good. Any thoughts on this?
I just think this whole process is so convoluted. And if the five of us don't have a clear understanding of this, how are we going to convince this to the citizens? And we're going back two years now, trying to solve this issue. I mean, for a matter of $2,000, why didn't they just wait for free cash to get certified?
Yeah, or capital.
You know, we're going to go from $20,000 to $22,000. And by the way, you have to raise that money. So if by chance, since they average about $6,000 a year, if you're saying there's $16,000 in there already, that gets them up to $22,000 if everybody pulls their permits. I imagine we'll really have heavy enforcement of burn permits to make sure people pull it. And by the way, the fire chief's retiring on June 30th, the day this all resets.
Yeah.
This is just like the perfect storm to get lost.
You were the one that recommended it go to finance. So what did they come back with? This?
Exactly what Ed represented, that what their thought wasn't this question. It was that there's the ability for the finance and select board to approve this outside of the...
To increase the cap one time until June 30th, 2023.
Yeah, personally, I'd like to be done with it one way or another. Because, I mean, the more we delay, the more the costs are just going to change. I mean, it's not going to get any cheaper in terms of this crazy trailer and...
So I think bottom line is at this moment, we're... I'll propose that we remove it from the warrant.
I agree with that. I'll second it if we're doing it as a motion.
Okay, so that's a motion to remove it?
Yeah.
Okay, in a second. Any further discussion, Francine, thoughts?
No.
All right, ready for vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right.
Who seconded it, please?
Marine.
John.
Oh, wait, John, sorry.
Oh, I had you making the motion.
I made the motion. Reading John, reading motion.
Reading motion, okay.
John's second.
Apologies.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we want to further talk about the one-time increase?
One-time increase? What do you mean?
Whether we want to put this on the agenda for a future select board meeting or...
Can the finance committee address it first and then bring the recommendation to us?
Will they be meeting anytime soon? When will finance be meeting, do you think?
It didn't set the meeting, but...
Well, I'm hoping that they will be able to meet just so they can vote on any recommendations on the financial matters and here, I'd be able to add them to it.
They probably do need to meet before the warrant, you know, before the special town meeting.
Just a question if they will have a quorum or not.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, let's kind of pull this one. We'll assume that we might see this back again after finance committee meets and makes any recommendations about the articles on the special town warrant that are within their purview, as well as take up this notion of a one-time special request to increase in the revolving fund for burn permits, okay? All right, so that's going to change the numbering of our articles, which was kind of what we were thinking about here in the first place.
Correct.
All right, moving on down, we've got two for...
Can I just ask a question?
Please.
Looking at the revolving funds on the revenue report versus the revolving funds listed in the expense report, the fire burning, the burning permits are not listed on the revenue report.
Yeah, it's in deficit. And I'm just going to remind you that you're looking at fiscal year '22 again instead of '23.
Yeah, we got the wrong... This is fiscal '22.
Which I should have actually noticed when Bradley did them.
I think that was only $10,000 anyway.
Yeah. Right. Correct.
I said it's on expense, it's not on revenue.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Moving on, we have two for community preservation.
Yep. CPC approved both of them.
Yep, CPC approved. One for a local match on the Mass Trails Greenway design and one for additional funding for another corner park sign that will go in front of the library on East Street, somewhere in that neighborhood. Okay. Any typos, corrections in any of these? And then next, we've got various bylaw amendments that have gone back and forth. There's one on a matter on public ways and littering combined together to be now called littering and dumping materials on public ways or places. So this is consolidating two existing bylaws into one. These have all gone through KP a number of times.
We went through them all, too.
Yep, I think we've gone through them all. Soliciting and canvassing an amendment on that one as well. Just some small wording changes. And then setting in the fines more specifically for a first, second, and third offense on those.
And then everybody knows that this was already approved by the attorney general.
Right, this one already had been. This is just a further clarification that they suggested that we make after their approval. Amendment on dogs and dog kennels, making it dogs colon licenses, kennels, and complaints. So again, trying to take a look at things that are kind of scattered all over the place in our current bylaws. This is one where we did have a public information meeting on and we've gone back and forth with legal counsel on. And they've made many recommendations in terms of citing specific mass general law, et cetera, in here. And the amount of enforcement on that. 14 is, right now, 14 is curb cuts. This is a very small change. I just updated the curb cut bylaw. Then we have some new bylaws. One is the marking of town-owned vehicles, which we've dealt with before. The new affordable housing trust bylaw, which has been worked on with Housing Authority and the Mass Housing folks. And then a last one on humane care and treatment of domesticated animals. So those are, that's the sum total of the warrants. Anybody see any funny typing, anything that's wrong there? It's not readable. I think we'll just end up having to renumber now. If we take number eight out, we'll just renumber those and then we'll come back. Also on number six here. So we'll come back to the... We'll come back to this to vote on this after we're...
After we go through six.
Along the next phase here. Now, given...
Would it be appropriate just to table this for one moment and just take up the sole ARPA application for Board of Health? And then we can go back and...
We could do that, yeah. We could do that because we've got some folks sitting here. I know we've got some people here for some PPFs as well. So I think we can probably figure out a way to modify our agendas here a little bit. Let's see if we can go back to the ARPA application. And I apologize, it did not make it on Judy's tracker form. We've got to give it a number. It came in with Kate's presentation last meeting for the quarterly or updated report from BOH. And somehow it didn't get a number and get on the tracking list. So we have before us an application from the Board of Health for $20,000, I believe. And this is to do contract inspection services 10 to 12 hours a week for the health department until the health agent position can be filled. Some of these inspection services include Title V inspections for the sale of properties, perk tests, final inspections of septic systems, restaurant inspections or complaint inspections. And the contractor will perform this as a special health agent for the Board of Health. And so this came about kind of unforeseen as the resignation of Nicole Fletcher happened. And they have identified and have been working with Charlie Knickie thus far on a couple of... For a couple of months now. And he has managed to do a number of inspections and Title V's here. So that's the request, is to put forth an amount of $20,000 from ARPA. And before anybody asks, I did send around the ARPA list. We have remaining in the ARPA funds. Total remaining is about $472,000. $472,981 by my math. Willing to have it double-checked.
Does that include the water department, both?
That includes the two water departments. It does not include the financial software upgrade, which has not been... We'll talk about it later on tonight, but that's $128,000 right there. $129,000. That's the only one that I think is on the list from previous times that has not been dealt with, if I'm not mistaken.
The only question I wanted to ask about the balance is, you know, we did this study and number one came out about a broadband. And I just worry that we haven't done enough. But I don't know what we could do because obviously fiber is millions of dollars. And so I just didn't know... We talked about getting someone from Charter in here. It just seems, Spectrum, rather, it just seems like it's very difficult to communicate. I think that the Technology Committee was going to be looking at it to see what they might propose.
They have. They've had meetings with Whip City Fiber out of Hoyoke, as well as the group... Sorry, Whip City Fiber out of Westfield, as well as the group that covers Hoyoke slash South Hadley. They've had some initial discussions about that. One of the things that has to happen, we did have the vote on the creating a municipal light plant on the other town meeting last year. We have to have a second vote in a separate fiscal year. So it doesn't have to be now, but if not, for another special town meeting, certainly by May, we would have to put in a vote to let us proceed with the next steps. And part of that would be engaging somebody to do, if we decide to go with company X, one of the things that they would have to do would be a poll study. And so that might be some money that could be used toward that little beginning phase, from my understanding. We certainly haven't seen anything else from the infrastructure bill, to my knowledge, coming out of the state or feds, right, at this point in time.
No, and I actually attended a MMA webinar on broadband and internet last week. And it was... And again, they seem to be prioritizing, shall we say, non-served communities or people versus poorly served.
Yeah. Well, I know, I think we're up 90%, but I do know that it's probably one of the most commonly complained about issues in town. So I'm not saying fiber is the only solution. I just think we need to get someone from Spectrum in here before all the money is spent to see if there's anything else that we can do as a town to improve people's internet short of having a very expensive fiber, which might just be a stepping stone. I mean, there might be something else down the road.
Could be, yeah. Yeah, okay. Okay, so we'll come down. But we do have, like I said, about 400... Okay, so we'll come down, but we do have, like I say, about $472,000, so take out $128, $128, $130, say that, so it gives you what, $340, thereabouts, the financial software, and then other ones that are smaller that are going to be before us tonight.
Just back on this, is it appropriate to ask questions of the Chair of the Board of Health?
Certainly, I think we could, since the Board has graced us with their presence. Thanks, Kate, for coming again.
Thank you for having me here tonight, Kailin Rooks, Chair of Board of Health.
So I have a couple questions. So the $20,000 is a very round number, it seems like maybe it was picked out of the air. But the intent is to use this fund solely for the purposes of contractual services while you continue to look for a replacement, right? Or would you, are you envisioning spending this money on anything else?
So when we made this request, we calculated the average number of hours that Charlie was working, looked at the average number of inspections per month, and calculated that number based upon the remaining fee, funds that were in Nicole's expense line, as well as the number, like, the number of months that were left in the month, I mean, down to the dollar. And we actually are also concerned that we had to utilize almost our entire expense line to cover this invoice. So we have $244,081 left in our expense line, which is something else I think it's worth discussing tonight, and I agree that it needs to be a plan that's going to get us through the end of the year. I would love to hire somebody in this position, because it's more fiscally responsible for the town. Of course, we're exploring any and all communication with local inspectors, local towns, to try to achieve that. So I attached Charlie's two invoices to the ARPA request, and say he does 10 to 12 hours, I will also just acknowledge that the real estate market is really driving this $20,000 request. There's a lot of home sales. Our number of inspections actually through our last meeting was higher than it had been in previous years, and so we don't anticipate that that's going to decrease over the next six months. We also didn't want to undershoot and put in the request that if we don't use all of those funds, that they're encumbered, and that we would not be using them for anything else. If there was any consideration to not move the full $10,000 into an expense line so we could use it for contractor fees, my suggestion would be to either transfer a portion of that money, or transfer at least some money, so we have, we have a very small expense line, and there are operating expenses, toner, printer charges, you know, that we're going to need through the end of the year. The number, the $20,000 figure was not pulled out of the air. In fact, if we took the invoices that Charlie had provided us, looked at some of the inspection fees, and said, what can we try to manage internally, which really isn't a lot, maybe a few complaint inspections and some of the restaurant inspections, but took into consideration that it is the winter, and we might see some dip in inspection services, but not that much.
From a layman's point of view, can you just help me out a little bit?
Sure.
Title V inspection and perk tests, I assume require, the individual doing that needs some sort of certification or licensing.
That's correct.
All right, and the other employee in the Board of Health does not have that licensure?
Correct.
Okay. What do we charge as a town or the Board of Health? What do we charge for a Title V inspection?
Uh, Title, sorry, I'm kind of flipping through. We actually adjusted our fees, we increased them recently, I think within the past few months, and the Title V filing fee, before we knew that Nicole was resigning, was increased to $200. Recognizing that the cost for the contractor is, pretty much wipes that out, right?
Well, I mean, so a Title V...
A revolving fund. And I'm sorry, right, right, but we're not, we're not getting that money back, so, but also that's, it's $50 per hour after two hours. So say if the inspection takes two hours, it's $200. If it's, it takes three hours, it's $250. It's increased incrementally.
I guess, I'm wondering, and you guys may have already explored this as a possibility, but a short-term, long-term solution. Other communities have created, and I don't think Southampton has, because the Board of Health doesn't have access to this money, the revolving funds, where, hey, a Title V is, yeah, it's 200 bucks, so 120 for the contractor to go out there, you've got to pay the extra 50 if it runs over. So, I mean, in theory, the program's designed, so it's not costing us anything to do this, and we have a contractor here who we know what their rates are, so, you know, 200 sounds great to me, provided that there's that $50 charge over if they run past. And the person getting the test, this is what it costs, and you do it, and then perhaps you don't need to fund that position, it just becomes a contract as needed.
I believe that this, this used to be the arrangement for Southampton, I believe it used to go into a revolving fund, in which we were able to kind of have a little pool of money, and it was changed some years ago. I think it's certainly worth considering again, because obviously town inspections are something that we are obligated to provide to people in Southampton. I just want to acknowledge that, that change, I'm not sure how long it would take to implement, but it's not going to address the immediate short-term challenge.
No, no, but, I mean, and again, and then the next one is the perk test. So it looks like we're being charged $200 for a perk test, which I understand the logic behind reading his contract on that, but I'm just curious, what are we charging the individual that requests the perk test?
A perk test is $200 for the first two hours and $50 for after two hours.
So like, that's an example where I would say, I think that fee right there needs to be adjusted sooner rather than later, because it's just, it's basically acting as a pass-through.
I understand that.
And it's not a, I mean, the $80 on the other one, I'm assuming there's some other paperwork that's being done by the office, receiving the application and doing all that before it's assigned to the consultant?
And scheduling, arranging times to complete these inspections, and I'm sorry, I misspoke. The Title V filing fee is 200, it's the percolation test that's 200 with a $50 overcharge.
So, and I understand this isn't going to solve tonight, but I, I personally would like this path explored, and to be, in theory, possibly either incorporated, or explain why it's not going to be incorporated into the next budget.
So who is, just, from my learning, who would be responsible for ultimately making that decision?
Voters.
Town meeting.
Voters.
Well, multiple parts, I mean, first, it's the voters not setting the weight, setting the fees, right? I think the Board of Health, the elected Board of Health would have to build the argument. Here's what it costs us to do it, here's the fee schedule.
Oh, not the fee, sorry. To change the structure to the revolving funds.
Well, then, yeah, it goes, every year, there's a whole list that gets recertified on a annual basis, much like the fire burn fees, which you may or may not be able to deficit spend.
The other thing I just want to acknowledge is, we've been in regular communication with the Northampton Health Department, because we are part of a regional health coalition, Shared Public Health Services Coalition, and they are hopeful that they're going to be able to provide us some supplemental inspection services, maybe by June to address this shortcomings. So I think it'd be also good to have a better understanding of what that impact would be, or if there is an impact on our operations, to see if it does offset some of the inspection needs for town.
You said you've already adjusted these fees pretty recently, though, right?
Correct. It says effective July 1st.
Right, but they could be redone, I mean, devil's advocate, they could be redone for January 1st, because the fee, and the Town Minister has brought this up multiple times, the fee needs to be documented and justified to cover the costs associated with the task. With, justifiably, I think you can add a 10 or 15% admin fee on it. It happens on the Police Department details, it happens on a lot of federal grants, have that built-in admin fee that you can tack onto it. And if we're being charged 200 bucks for a perk test with $50 afterwards, the fee at minimum should cover that plus the 10%.
We did discuss at the last meeting, the, when we did adjust the fees, we did a comparative analysis of local communities, and acknowledged that if we increase the fees, the costs are just going to get passed on to the consumer. And so when we made these decisions, we did, we looked at a bunch of towns locally and said, this is what's being charged in our local market, and it is drastically different than what's being charged on the other side of the state, but it's certainly worth considering.
Right, because the downside, the opposite to that argument, is not doing it that way means all the other residents of Southampton have to pay for that shortfall.
And I totally understand that.
They're already here, they've already built their houses or done these things.
Absolutely. And we also did add into Charlie's contract to try to reduce the cost as much as possible, that, for instance, inspections that take less time, we could group them together. So say if it's a restaurant inspection that takes one hour, he would have a two-hour minimum, but he could do multiple inspections in the same day, so we're not incurring that two-hour minimum charge more times than we absolutely need to.
I think it only requires serve safe to do inspections of restaurants, which I think that people in the senior center, I think that Board of Health members, as well as Jerry, could easily have, I think there needs to be a redistribution of the work in the office, and I think that the bottom line is, there needs to be temporary employees and not contracted employees. I think that when it comes, you know, we expect, you know, department heads to manage their budgets, and we're always making an exception, and I just, I just can't support this.
I will just say, you mentioned the senior center, what do you mean by that?
They, a couple of the employees there have serve safe, so they can serve food, and I think that it doesn't require a soil evaluator license in order to do the restaurant inspections. So I think that Health Director or any one of the Board of Health members could help out. I think that a creative solution has to come up. I mean, the Board of Health has total jurisdiction over the work of the office, and the Select Board in town have jurisdiction over the funding. And I just think that we have certain expectations of departments, and there are a lot of department heads that are working very hard to stay within the budget, and I think there needs to be a creative solution to this problem.
Well, and I think, too, the, I mean, obviously, the, I think you said that members of the Board of Health and Jerry have, have done some of the restaurant inspections?
Jerry has done some of the restaurant inspections. In fact, she had some follow-up with a restaurant inspection today, just, you know, acknowledging that this is outside of the normal day-to-day operations of what she normally is expected to do, and we have a one person, Health Director.
Three person, and she reports to the Board of Health.
And I agree, but I'm unable, I will just say, the three board members are unable to complete restaurant inspections at this time, and acknowledging that, you know, Jerry is able to do some of the inspections, but not most of those, the inspections on that list.
And she's getting additional three hours away from ARPA already.
Or there may be the complaints, or whatever that, you know, she could handle.
Yep, she was out on one of those today.
Looking at the invoices, I'm not seeing really restaurant inspections on here.
We haven't been doing them, because Nicole did them before she left.
Twice a year?
Twice a year.
She got them all done before she left.
Right.
Right, so we have time to look into that and explore that a little bit further, and maybe we'll have some, it's also challenging to bring on multiple employees to be accomplishing different things. Right now, we have somebody that's able to support these inspection needs, and as John mentioned, if it's better for us to increase the fee to make it more sustainable while we figure out what this grant is going to provide for us, and, which is going to take about six months to accomplish, and while we seek out applications, you know, while we talk to other towns to see if they have...
I just think along the fees, I mean, I get it, if it's an employee, then the fee, the fee should still justify this cost. So I think some of the fees should be up there, and I would just encourage you to add at least a 10% admin fee onto it, if not more.
We'll make sure to add that to our agenda next meeting.
Don't forget, it does justify it if you use the health agent wages.
Correct, but I'm going two roads. So one, if we're going to use an employee, then what they're doing, we need to be able to collect the money, and yes, that offsets it, but would, as we've done when the budget comes, we look at your line item, and we look at what's come in, okay? They should be at least kind of washing each other out, if not. If you're going to go the contractor route, you don't have that wage line item, so therefore, what's contractor charging, the fees need to be above that. You know, they could be parallel, whether we go the employee route or the other route, but the, I'm curious, the two invoices attached here, October 31st and October 3rd equal roughly $5,200. Do you need any of this $20,000 in order to pay these two?
Well, we had transferred part of our, part of our expense line to cover the first invoice, because we imminently had to provide inspection services, and I'm here, I was here at the last meeting, I'm here tonight, because yes, it's, we imminently need funds to support ongoing inspections.
The October 3rd for $1,900 has been paid out of the existing budget?
The, it was paid out of our expense line, so we have $244,81 to last us through the end of the fiscal year.
Right, so whatever decision's made, whether the taxpayers move the $7,000 or ARPA money, the 33 is outstanding for October 3rd, and presumably there's a November invoice out there somewhere.
Correct, and I would just also acknowledge that the, the contract for Charlie's work was not approved until after Labor Day, so the September invoice was only for about three weeks' worth of work, so we did factor that into our overall request.
So if we haven't paid for the month of October, we're looking and anticipating that we may not have the position till for the rest of the year, we still have nine months of inspections to cover.
And that's with getting creative.
An average of $3,000, and this, hence the $27,000.
Right.
Right, but I can't imagine there's going to be a lot of perk tests when the ground freezes.
But that's, and that's when we balance it with restaurant inspections. I mean, it's, you schedule your inspections over the course of the year, based upon...
And I think that's where my colleague was coming from, that if there is an internal source that can do the restaurant inspections, we shouldn't assign it to the contractor. Now you have that whole three-hour ARPA assignment, if it's taking 10 hours, there's an argument to be made there. That's management oversight, you know, I'm just here to talk about the money piece, but...
Okay. All right, so at this point, we have before us the request for $20,000.
And so I just want to acknowledge that if we choose not to transfer the money out of the expense line, and maybe the answer is to transfer some of, I'm sorry, the wage line to our expense line and to leave that other money, then I do believe that the request for the ARPA funds needs to be adjusted accordingly, because it was, it was to the month, basically to the dollar for what we expected the expenses to be. And I think it's too early to tell, over the course of the fiscal year, how many more inspections that we're going to be doing this year, like through the end of the year. When we looked, it's a calendar year for inspections, and we had already done over, done more perk tests this year than we had through the end of the year last year. I'm sorry, I don't have that, those numbers with me, but it is substantially more.
So I'm assuming if the ARPA wasn't here, what would the Board of Health do?
It's a great question.
Because you've still got to provide the services.
We are obligated to provide the service, absolutely.
These kind of services.
And certainly during the next budget season, maybe we'd have to look at the overall plan for the, for the Board of Health. We looked at a separate account, and Francine, I can't remember the name of which account, but it had limited funds for the whole town, and we didn't want to exhaust those funds. Who are we talking about? We really dug into this issue quite a bit to try to come up with the best.
We asked for a lot of documentation for this, because, you know, we don't have to go to town meeting to distribute ARPA funds, so I think this committee has worked really hard to ask for lots of documentation. I haven't heard anything in terms of, like, who's been contacted. I mentioned about East Hampton, I talked to the person over there, Westfield, Hoyoke, you know, what about, you know, there needs to be plans to go towards a regional service, like the Foothills District and other districts. Towns of this size, it's very difficult to be able to maintain the services without doing some kind of a regional...
And we are part of a regional coalition, Northampton, and they clearly stated that they're not going to provide inspection-related services until at least June.
Where they share health agents, they share nurses, they share other services.
Right, we're not a part of any of them.
It's not, it's not the same situation, it's a grant.
Right, exactly, yeah. What, do you know what West Hampton does offhand? Or do they have a volume of activity?
They have a, I think they have a contractor, I'd have to look.
In the Foothills District.
Yeah.
And so is Williamsburg and Goshen.
It would be quite a change from our, to switch to the Foothills District, it's something that we've explored in the past, we just didn't think that it made, we thought it made sense to join in with Northampton, and we're hopeful that these services would be available sooner, but because of the way that the state, the state is driving this grant program, and expectations of what needs to happen first, which is the standardization of regulations, and to expand training for trainers, or for inspectors, so they're doing, the state is requiring that to happen first, before they're offering, like, four more funding for inspection services, because there's 300 soil evaluators in the queue, there's nobody getting certified for perk testing. I mean, many towns are using contractors to meet this need, including Northampton, and we did speak to East Hampton, and they have a four-day-a-week inspector that works full-time 40 hours, like, they're a full-time employee for East Hampton. We spoke to Westfield, they have full-time employees.
That person's not interested or available to do Southampton? Four days a week is four days a week, I mean, we have our own people that work four days a week that work for another town the extra day of the week. And, you know, I think the Foothills District, I just want to maybe ask the Board of Health to go back and talk about that, because, don't forget, our school district is Williamsburg, West Hampton, Goshen, we're talking about three out of the, I think they also have another town, too, that's not in the school district, but it might be a logical shift, because a lot of the towns that are in our own school district are part of Foothills.
I don't know that we, they are going to be offering inspection services in the same way that Northampton has promised, but, I mean, we're happy to explore.
Well, or what it would take to even join the district.
It's, we are receiving funding through Northampton, we explored switching to West Springfield, South Hadley, to swi- South Hadley, to, to switch towns and to switch the funding also is a process.
It's a different situation. The Foothills District is you're part of a group that you work together and you, you get services and it's shared throughout the whole Foothills District. The collaborative is a grant in Northampton where it's shared services, but it's not the work of a health agent. It came about because of COVID and it's, you know, nursing services and they're talking in the future about, you know, having some shared services. But the Foothills District is, they're shared employees.
I recognize that and I just know that none of this really even became an issue until September when we received a resignation from our health agent. So it's not like we've had a year to really plan around this. I mean, it is rather urgent, unanticipated situation.
I think you're aware of the various issues and, you know, some of the concerns and things that we've had on, on this end too. So it takes time to explore these things, but John?
Well, I just, I recognize the, the crossroads that we're at. We, we have to do something one way or the other. I'm in, I'm in favor of, you know, buying time for the Board of Health, the, the three-member elected board to go back and look at this and all the possibilities and, you know, get some breathing room. The fact is that the employee, you know, did resign and you're in a pinch and we have to get through this and we have to require these tests, or we have to provide these testing. I'm, so I, I would move to approve this ARPA application as modified in the following way. $20,000 to be used for the sole purpose of this contractor and only when, because of his licensing, he's required to perform the test. I, I think there's, there's a separate avenue for the restaurants because we have people on staff, that we have an individual on staff that's able to do that. And the fact that some of that backlog's been done, but I get it. You, you have to have a license for Title V and you need the license for the perk test and he has it, so it should be spent with that. And then I would also, understanding your original request of moving the money plus this, get you up to the total 30, that I would approve another $10,000, but that $10,000 is to be encumbered. And you can't spend it until we see the, the progress on the 20. And feedback as to what you heard tonight, we've explored the, the, not the Black Hills, the Foothills. And this is the way it is, I know. And, and we've looked at this and, you know, they have more conversation. But in the meantime, you still have to perform these tests. There is the contractor performing these services, they're entitled to be paid for their services, so.
So you're saying hold on the transfer.
Oh, yes, and remove Article 7 from the special town meeting.
That's what he's saying, yeah.
The only, my, my only question would be, okay, so we have one, one health director who's 32 hours plus an additional three hours through ARPA funding, who has a, a pretty full workload and she's managing all the administrative tasks within the office. It's a, it really is a one-person department with the, with the oversight of three volunteer board members. My concern is that her other job duties will not be able to be met adequately if we add on these additional restaurant inspections to her, without accommodating that time and that expect, you know, it just doesn't seem feasible.
I hear you, so where possible.
Where possible. I think that's, that's fair and as I mentioned, Jerry was out doing an inspection today. You know, there are complaints, there are things that come up, but it's, to, to expect that a one-person health director is going to be able to manage all of the, all of the inspections for the town in addition to her day-to-day responsibilities seems ambitious.
And so this comes up with the 20, it clears the backlog of invoices, it gets you into April or May, so to speak. There's that other 10 that's sitting there, you gotta, you know, you have to come back for it and, and then hopefully we may, by that time it'll be budget cycle and all that.
What are the 10 you think, you're talking about?
I'm going for a total of $30,000.
Oh my gosh.
20 to be released immediately through the contractor, encumber another 10.
Taking out the town meeting altogether.
Right, and encumber $10,000 of ARPA.
They're asking department heads to manage their own budget. Now you're basically giving them 20, $30,000 and saying, forget about it, you don't have to manage your own budget. They had, they had voted in favor of moving money to be able to cover an expense. You know, we have four departments at least that have, you know, very limited people that take care of, you know, that are managing their own funding. The Board of Assessors has a 15-hour temporary person, they increased the administrative person in the office, they're seeking out a senior for a work-off program to have more presence in the office, to reduce the administrative assistant workload, which I'm sure your director has a lot of administrative assistant duties. I just think that, I, I don't support it all going up to $30,000 on ARPA money.
Are you in favor?
They don't have a of the town meeting warrant.
You're still in favor of it still being in the town meeting.
Going up to 75 if they need to, like Ed suggested.
I will also acknowledge that that leaves us very little money in our expense line. And also, if we have, you know, an expected expense of 30, $3,000 to $3,300 a month for a contracted service provider, which is the solution that we have available to us now, and I will just, pulling together contractors and piecemealing people, I just, I'm also curious about how much money it's actually going to save us in the bigger picture when we're still pulling in contractors. But I, I, you know, to, to even leave that, regardless if we take that $7,000 or $10,000, it's still only going to cover a small portion of the remainder of the fiscal year.
Well, but I think to Francine's point, it was the average of, that would be a total of 20, say 27.
And that's, and during that meeting, that's what we looked at, we projected that this was the amount in order to keep the services readily available to, to the town. And we have an obligation to provide that.
I just feel like there's also a sort of like, we're not going to get anybody for the rest of the year feeling. That's what I'm sensing here, like there should be a, there should be a concerted effort to have a temporary employee instead of a contracted employee. There should be a concerted effort to get a 10-hour-a-week health agent.
I agree with that.
I, I, we only have a 10-hour-a-week health agent that, in the budget. And I just feel like there needs to be a really full-on effort to get a temporary.
There's a very big difference between the 10-hour-a-week that we were paying an employee versus the 10-hour-a-week we're paying to a consultant.
And I'll just say, Northampton.
That's what I'm saying, I think there needs to be an all-out concerted effort to, to actually get back to a temporary employee as opposed to a contracted employee and then a permanent employee.
But, but I think that's the objective, but in order to keep business moving forward and being able to accomplish this, we have to have a plan.
I feel like there's a discussion that's going on where, where just planning until the end of the year as is. And I don't get the sense that there's a week after week intention of getting a temporary and then permanent.
So we did, so just to mention, we spoke to Northampton who's hiring a consultant to provide supplemental services. We spoke to East Hampton, they're bringing on a consultant in addition to their full-time employee because of the way that the market has been go, like, I also feel like the, the real estate market is really driving some of this need. And, and the circumstances right now, we're not the, the circumstances two years ago. Maybe it'll change, maybe it won't, but the, the local market is dry for inspectors. I'm happy to pull together reports, call whatever, you know, document, provide whatever information you need. We spoke to Montague, Southwick, Greenfield, Franklin County, they have a coalition that we spoke to, Holyoke, Westfield, you know, we can add to the list if that will help to support our argument.
Sounds like from what you've said earlier, earlier meeting too, that there's a, it's a challenge, just as it has been for the police department, for the fire department, to attract qualified people.
Accountant office.
Yeah, to attract qualified.
But we also haven't, so there's other budgetary adjustments that have been made for other departments as well. And not that I'm trying to compare apples and oranges, each department clearly has their own challenges. But you know, we, we don't, we don't have a lot of flexibility in our budget because we have a relatively and comparatively small budget overall.
Well, and I think, I don't, I don't know that I get the same sense that you have, Renee, that the intent is not to keep on searching for somebody. I mean, I think the, the notion of using the 27,000 and just saying on average.
In the worst-case scenario, they're going to need it all.
3,000 or something, it may get you through June, maybe.
And I would appreciate coming up with a solution so that that way we can present back to the Select Board that we don't need that ARPA funding. And it's not, we're certainly happy to persist with that. Because honestly, I would love to have that resolved for many, for, for multiple reasons.
But I, I think, you know, part of the issue is, you know, how, how you've been able to try and, and, you know, other than talking to people, but you know, what level of recruiting are, are we able to do? I mean, how do we advertise it? How do we get the word out? You know, I mean, obviously word of mouth works, but you know, I'm not sure what other things have been doing. So I think that's part of what Renee's saying is that the concerted effort is there to not, not just sort of let it go, but to really keep on pushing to find that person to come in and.
And advertising costs money as well. You know, advertising for this position isn't free. I think, you know, we've, I know it's been posted a little, but, but posting advertised positions is money that we clearly don't even have in our expense line at this point.
The other question is, if we do get someone, are we going to get someone at the same rate as the former employee?
I highly doubt that, at 23 something.
There's going to be a hole there regardless of.
We spoke to former board members to see if they would be willing to do inspection services. They said yes at the rate of $60 an hour, 50 to 60, 60 to $75 an hour. I mean, just expecting that we're going to be able to bring someone on at 20, even $25 or $30 an hour seems unlikely. And maybe the state will push through soil inspector program to address the existing 300 people to be able to provide that service. Or same thing with percolation tests, it's just, there's nowhere to even get trained to be able to become that person. I'll get certified on how to do percolation tests if it just, you know, it's just infeasible.
All right, let's, let's get a clear motion here. We had.
Yeah, so my motion was to approve a cumulative of 30,000 out of ARPA. 20,000 to be released immediately for the purposes of paying this consultant that we've contracted with to perform the services that require the licensing and only when necessary to assist the department with non-licensed, you know, inspections. And that the other 10,000 be encumbered and available upon some of these things we talked about, the weight, the, the fee schedule being adjusted or evaluated to correspond with this. And, you know, to the other points, talking with the others and figuring out what the best course of action is, having a game plan instead of, please don't wait till June 30th. I know, that's my motion.
Thank you.
And to cancel Article 7 on the town warrant.
All right, somebody want to second that?
I'll second it.
Yes, Mr. Ed.
Now that it's been seconded, I'll actually say what I was going to.
Article 6, I should say.
And if you cancel Article 6.
They can't spend it, yeah.
They got 244 bucks for the right, which is.
I realized that afterwards.
Well, no, I'm going to give you a way out however, of still canceling it. If the Select Board wished to, as also an amendment to this motion, were to say, "And we would like the $1,904 invoice that's already been paid to be transferred to ARPA."
To be reclassified to the ARPA.
It would take care of the issue of them having some, a decent amount of money to get through the end of the year.
I'll accept the amendment to the motion.
Thank you.
Everybody understanding this? So we're, I'm hearing, I'm hearing 30,000 plus.
20,000 to be made available immediately, 10,000 to be encumbered. All the 1942 invoice already paid out of general fund for their expense line, for that invoice to be reclassified to the initial 20,000.
As part of the 20,000?
Yes.
I see, okay, got it.
That then gives them back their, their budgeted expense items for their regular things.
Thank you.
Okay, everybody ready on this? Did you have enough discussion on this? Shall we take a vote? All those in favor, is anybody unclear on the motion? Everybody got it? Okay. All those in favor of the motion as presented and amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Joy, I didn't hear.
Aye.
All right, 4 to 1. Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
I'm Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the special town meeting warrant as amended this evening for Tuesday, December 30th, 2022.
All right, and just to revise, the amendment then is to?
Eliminate Article 6 and eliminate Article 8, I believe.
8. Okay, all right. Everyone got that? Okay, could I have a second on that?
I'll second that.
All right, could we have a vote, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Okay, 4 to 1. All right, motion passes.
And if you'll excuse me now, I am going to go edit this so that you can sign it tonight.
We'll sign it, I mean, yeah, we will, because we've got to get it posted, right? It's got, according to Robert, this has to be posted on November, by Monday, the 28th, I believe? Is that what I'm hearing? Let me just read his little message.
Yes, but tomorrow's a half day, I might take Friday, I might not. So I just assume get it signed, edited and signed tonight.
No, understood, but I, I think we're.
I can, would you, would the Chair like me to continue to take minutes in his absence so we could move through some of the PCFs?
Well, I just take kind of notes on the motions and stuff.
Who made it second?
Yeah, Kat, she still does the.
Okay.
I can do that.
Okay.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, that's fine.
Are we going to table then the other ARPA applications for the moment?
I would at the moment and go back to, I think we ought to maybe take.
Can we go to the library issues?
Do one issue of people that have been sitting here waiting. Thanks, Kate. We've got a couple of these to pick up from the PCFs that are here.
Do you want to do the library first?
Yes, why don't we do that?
I'll make a motion to bring up the PCF for Johanna Douglas of East Hampton for the Edwards Public Library, a change in status from 30 hours per week as the youth department librarian at a grade slash step 11/6 salary of $21.97 to a proposed status of 35 hours per week, position title, library director, step 5, salary of $26.33, permanent status with benefits.
So I'll second, that was your motion?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
So, for discussion, I hear a second, Francine? John motion, Francine second?
And before I leave, I will just call your attention to what the information I had sent to the Select Board that back in May, the Select Board adjusted the pay scales and adopted them. Library director happens to fall under grade 5. At 2635 an hour, it's a little bit above step 5 for someone that.
2633.
2633.
2633 would be step 5. The individual does not have any experience as a library director, as I said in my email that the, back in May, you had given the existing library actually an increase that capped at 11% to 2739, which put her between step 6 and stuff. Just want to remind the Select Board that what you adopted in May, this does go against.
PQB addressed this? They approve it?
We did.
They approved it?
We, we did approve it, but keep in mind PBB's authority is, it's on the correct grade scale, it's within the range, and the town accountant approved it for budgetary purposes. So it, it met those three standards.
Right, okay. I mean, I think part of the issue is, is a little bit of just where we are on, in terms of the scale with the library director who left. I mean, this is putting this very close to someone who had 10 years' experience, at least, I believe, on, as a library director.
And I would just add, during that public meeting, the only individuals to speak one way or the other were trustees of the board, of the library. Nobody else came forward to publicly express an opinion one way or the other.
Okay, all right. Well, since we have obviously someone from the trustees here, I think we may as well hear from them and tell us what your, your thinking is. And part of it may be to educate us too in terms of your candidate's background. We, we know her as the youth librarian, but.
I'm Convy Stahl, 14 Jonathan Judge Circle in Southampton and library trustee. First of all, well, Joanna has not been a library director before, that is not unusual. Usually you hire from, say, heads of, of other libraries who are deciding to be promote, want a promotion to go on. And so the, the fact that she has not been a library director should not be held against her. Now, during the eight years that she's been at the library, she has been working with Barbara, our former director. When Barbara was not there, she was the assistant, she stood up as the interim director. So she was, has been handling many of the duties with, during these past eight years. When Barbara made her intentions known that she was going to be retiring within the year, she included in having Johanna take on additional responsibilities, perhaps, maybe we should have gone to the personnel ballot board, maybe didn't, we didn't, but, so she took them on and, and in the end has decided that she asked she would like to be the director. So that was very helpful. I would point out that while she has not been a library director, she has been a program director at a previous library experience. Also, she's had experience in, in grant and fundraising. She's hired personnel before. She has had other accounting experience also. So she brings with her a depth of experience. She is also very well-liked by the library. We have received, many, many patrons have said that they would like to see Johanna become director. And I would also like to point out that she's been the interim director now for, for the two months, and she's done a very good job. The public has been very happy with her. But also, she knows the town, she's working here. We don't have to go out and retrain and have someone come from another library system. She knows our system, she knows the challenges that we, we face, she understands the budget aspects of it. And so I think that we need to reward employees that do a good job. And most industries, I know at least where I came from, that's what we tried to do where I worked. And, and you got promoted. And so, yes, you may not have had that title, but you had the life experience, you had the experiences to do that. And she does, I, we believe that she does have that. Also, I would like just to point out that I did, I took a look at the Massachusetts Library Board, there are statistics now, these are nineteen, these are twenty-twenty-one, and the average hourly rate for a library director is twenty, is thirty-four dollars for thirty-three hours a week. And the basic entry fee is twenty-eight dollars. So if we had to go out and hire somebody, we're, we're going to go, have to go beyond even this twenty-five sixty-three in order to attract someone. That's just the reality of it right now. If, just going on the library board, if someone can apply for a position as a reference librarian, branch supervisor, they're only going to make twenty-eight dollars to start. This is not a director position. Another position is twenty-six forty-four. Also, in the, the towns around us, such as Dalton, Hadley, Hatfield, Hamden, Northfield, Raleigh, Sunderland, West Hampton, and Williamsburg, these are all towns similar to us in our population. They are all paying anywhere from twenty-nine, or let's see, forty-one dollars. The town of Raleigh, which has six thousand people, they pay forty-one dollars and forty-six cents. West Hampton, which has one thousand six hundred, they pay twenty-four sixty-eight an hour. So I don't believe that we are asking an unusual amount of money for this person. I believe that she was qualified enough to do this job. I feel that, again, we will save in expenses in terms of orientation. And I, I think we need to reward, and we have a candidate that can do that. We don't always have that. And we do, in this case.
Somebody wants the job, yep.
Karen, do you have anything that I can add? Anything? Do you have any questions?
Okay.
Articulating it sufficiently?
I just want to support what Convy's saying. In my working relationship with Barbara, as we were replacing computers in the library, she always involved Johanna in the decisions. And to my also awareness and just being around the library, whenever Barbara was out of the office, the person she left in charge and directed people to was Johanna. So maybe it not have been, it may not have been her title, but that was her, how she functioned within, within the, within the, within the library. And so to say that she has no experience really is, is not the reality. You had to be there, you had to see her, you had to see the interaction, and you had to see how Barbara relied on her.
Did you have a?
Get any thoughts?
I totally support the amount that the trustees proposed. I think it's been approved also by PQB. I think that from our standpoint, we've been doing a lot of work in the last two years to try to bring up wages, to actually get, you know, we actually just used ARPA funds for a compensation study, which we don't have the results of back. I don't know if we've even engaged anybody yet. But nonetheless, I just think that part of the reason why it was even questioned was because as early as this past budget cycle, we raised people up with certain commonalities.
We grouped people.
And it comes outside that commonality. So I think that was the reason why it was questioned, but I do support what the board trusts.
I totally understand.
That was, that was the reason why it was even questioned was because it was different from what we had used as a standard as early as the last, this budget cycle.
Well, and that understanding normally what our past practice has been, anyway, right or wrong, is that when you hire somebody into a position, you're usually starting them at the step, the first step of that position. And I, I know that right now, I believe we have compensated Johanna a bit for the combo job she's been doing.
Twenty-five now.
She's at twenty-five now.
We can't ask her to go back.
By doing both, both jobs. And I would totally agree, you can't, can't go backwards on that.
I think you can hire people that are higher up in the step scale.
It's within our budget, we're not going over budget.
Yeah, no, within, within relevant experience, you should be able to do that. But I think that has not been the practice in town. I think we've had a couple of exemptions already this year where other departments have come to us saying, look, we've got this highly qualified person, we risk not being able to put this person on unless you let us put that person in at, you know, step three or something like.
Right, and I think there's another one coming up tonight. But what has been happening that I don't think happened in the past is somebody coming in representing the department head, whether it be the trustees or the police chief later on, gets up there and makes a case. It's just not automatically assumed, well, my budget's here, so that's the number we're going to pay. It's build a story, convince us, and then, so far, we have not denied any, any of these.
No, we have not.
That have come outside the range. It's just, you've got to go on record and say why, which I think you did an excellent job doing.
Right, yeah. And I think we acknowledge, you know, that, I mean, based on this, you know, we acknowledge that we are not starting somebody at, at step one of this cohort that we established during budget season, just many, many months ago.
I'll tell you, I've been a trustee for over thirty-two years, all right? And I've been through the hiring process before for many directors, and you don't always know what you're going to hire. And we do know with Johanna, we know we have a proven record, we know what she's been able to do, we've seen her punt when things have been tough. And I believe that she will continue to do that, I really do.
Can you just speak to one thing? I'm just noticing on the job description, there was the minimum of a master's in library science? Where is she in that process? As, as recommended, it's not required?
Yes, and she has a master's of fine arts. So it's not in library science, but it, she makes up, and when we posted the job, it said equivalent experience.
Right.
Until we are using that.
Yeah.
And there are people, I've talked with the library board, you can hire somebody in the position. Ideally, we would, but I will tell you right now.
Yes.
Again, we go out, we're, we're looking at someone.
Right.
With more money than want.
Right, right, yeah. No, and, and that's, that's put in as recommended, it's not required experience, it's recommended. So that, just for the note on that. Okay, so any further discussion? If not, are we ready to, do we have a motion? I'm sorry.
There's a motion made and seconded.
There's a motion made and seconded, all right. And the motion was to accept the proposal, excuse me, of putting Johanna into this position as library director at twenty-six thirty-three per hour. Okay, for thirty-five hours a week, correct? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right, any votes? Nope.
There's two more libraries.
Yep, all right. Thank you. Is there?
I'll make a motion to approve Carol LaCass, emergency new hire sub. It doesn't say here, but I'm assuming this is library, at fifteen dollars an hour, and.
At how much now?
So it's emergency plus new hire at fifteen dollars an hour.
Okay. LaCass, yeah. Okay. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. All right. Is there anything else for our library while you're here?
No.
If not?
I think that's it.
Okay. Thank you very much, I think. Let me just find my agenda that I just put down and lost. Hang on.
Madam, Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, are you done doing all of the ARPA?
No, we are not. We, we had to skip around, so we're going to go back to the ARPA. We've got a couple more ARPA's that came up.
We have one more signature for the chief? Do we want to? I mean, I don't oppose to making him work.
We have, I think we have one.
We have a communications.
Yeah, dispatch, there's two.
Here we go, hang on.
Part-time non-benefited as well as a telecommu, they're right after Johanna.
You're okay with that? I'll make the motion.
Okay, well, Joy just left, is she? She might have stepped up a minute. Okay, so we've, we've taken up Johanna and Carol LaCass as the library.
Library substitute.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve Christina Atkins, part-time non-benefited dispatcher, twenty-two dollars an hour, and also, is that also full-time public safety?
They're two separate.
Oh, one's a PRF, I'm sorry. I'll do it separately then.
Okay.
Christina Atkins, part-time non-benefited dispatcher, twenty-two dollars an hour.
I'll second.
Okay. Making, Rini, Rini motion, John second? All those in favor?
So this, this is a full-time person who's going to go down to part-time status to stay on.
We saw that on the forms, yep. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
And then I'll make a motion to approve the PRF for full-time public safety telecommunications dispatcher.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second the.
Any discussion on the PRF?
Yeah, the unique thing on that one is, is that there's already a waiver on file, or a letter of recommendation from the union.
Yes.
Of approving the chief's plan to potentially offer a higher rate.
Police ones. We're discussing the PRF for the.
That was on the.
Right here. PRF.
Oh, yeah, a full-time dispatcher, right. That's the letter from Sherri, Cheryl Kelly?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, even, yeah, please.
If you had any questions on here, it's just, I approached the union to see if they would be willing to allow for a new hire, to seek a new hire, that their, their pay and benefits would be commensurate to their experience, like, much like we did with the police officer's position. The starting rate for a full-time dispatcher right now, base rate is sixteen forty-one an hour. I just find it's going to be very difficult to, to fill that position, especially someone that will likely be going to midnights and working holidays and weekends. So I want to try to make it as, I want to advertise as well as I can, and.
What it is, you want to poach from another dispatcher.
No, no.
How else do they get the use of experience?
Well, you know, maybe they just decided to leave another, you know.
All right, okay, so this will be for a full-time position, it'll be open until it's full, until it's filled, all right? And you have the approval from the union to start at a slightly different rate.
Yes.
If you find somebody with a qualified experience.
That has the, yes, it would be commensurate to their experience.
Right, okay. All right, I think we had a motion by Rini and seconded by John.
Yep.
All those in favor of the PRF for the dispatch?
Aye.
All right. Good, all that is approved. Thank you.
Have a nice, safe holiday.
All right.
You too.
Okay, now, we will get back to, let me just check off things so I don't lose my place here, and we'll come back to all the other PRFs afterwards here, okay?
Do you want Ed to be here for the ARPA's or no?
Um.
One's financial and that one's.
I don't think we're ready to vote on the finance one. Let's pull up the ARPA. I don't know why the ARPA finance one got in, I don't, we need to find out from him what's holding it up, because he's got the two quotes. I don't understand. I asked him if he, if he was ready to vote on it, and he said no. So we'll wait till he comes back on that one. However, we do have one for Southampton Historical Society, let me just pull this up for a minute, just make sure I don't have any others on my list here. Is there one more? I think we have Southampton Historical Society, Clark Chapman House, and on this, since I'm on the board of directors, I'm going to recuse myself and turn this one over to John.
Okay.
And I will swing back by in a few minutes.
Okay.
So, this is the letter. Is, is there an actual application?
Yeah, it's in. Yeah, there's quite a bit of documentation too.
It's pretty. If everything were numbered.
Oh, I know. Page three.
There's a letter from Tammy, here's the application.
So an application for the project name of the Clark Chapman House basement, repair, restore the basement stairs landing as they have become a hazard getting in the basement, replace five support columns in the basement that are holding the building up coming down the stairs from second floor. You can feel the stairs drop an inch or two upon further review, the lolly columns in the basement, they have rotted out and are not supporting the floor above. And the financial ask is twelve thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars. With supporting documentation supplied. Discussion?
If we could hear from Tammy Valunas.
Who would like to be heard on this? Name and address for the record, please, speak clearly. Microphone.
Tammy Valunas, two ninety-eight College Highway, president of the Historical Society. We had a board member, or actually our curator, coming down the stairs, and the whole thing shifted an inch. So we went going down in the basement, and the lolly columns right under the stairs have rotted off, they are metal, and they have completely rotted apart from all the moisture down in the basement. I don't know previously if it had flooded or what, but there's five lolly columns down there that are in very rough shape. I've had contractor come in and look at it, and somebody from town, and then I've gone out and gotten all the quotes and everything, and I have a plumber that is willing to do all the plumbing work free, so that's not in the quote. But there's, and then as you're going down into the basement, the foundation holding the base up has all rotted out, and the whole floor moves. So when you go down eight, seven steps, you get to a landing, and that all moves. And then you have to go down eight more to get down into the actual basement, ducking your head because there's concrete there too. But it's in rough shape. And unfortunately, due to COVID and many members falling off of our membership, not being able to do all fundraisers, we are very behind in monies to be able to do something like this.
So you mentioned about, this would probably qualify for CPC funds, right?
Yes.
Is it just not time enough?
Correct. I was, we, we, the contractor that we talked to can actually start this in January. Trying to go through CPC, I had been trying to watch for when they're having meetings, and they hadn't been having them.
We had two meetings and approved two articles for the, this special town meeting.
Yes, I missed them. And the day that I was able to turn this stuff in, I wasn't able to be at the tenth meeting you were having, so I'm hoping you didn't discuss it there. Okay. Yeah, it is something, and then we would have to go forth through the town, we'd have to get three quotes for the contractor's basement work, three contractors' quotes for the electrical, three contractors' quotes for the, the humidifier, and three contractors' quotes for plumbing.
Well, is that bypassed because of this, Ed?
What's that?
She's referring to the ARPA application for the basement work at Clark Chapman House, and basically she's saying if it went the CPC route, it would be delayed because of town meeting and CPC vote and all that, but also they would have to do three quotes. Isn't there, you're, you're not a town department, so.
No, we're not.
Is it only CPC funding that requires you to actually?
I don't know if CPC, as part of their application, requires three quotes, let me go take a look.
I believe it does.
I think, one way or another, I think they're.
To answer your ARPA question, I don't, on the ARPA question, I don't believe we require three different quotes for the.
ARPA, no.
No, we didn't.
I think we just took, and that, that amount was greater. I think we just took, and that, and that amount was greater.
Right, right, right.
Greater than those.
And I just went with like the hu- the humidifier. Uh, I did have three quotes for that. I went with the lowest-
Dehumidifier, right?
Uh, yeah, dehumidifier. Um-
And this says the quote's only good for seven days, and this was dated eleven-one. Do you, are you concerned about the, any, is this guaranteed until January?
That quote, no, and that is written on the contract, that due to pricing and changes on of demand for products, the price can go up.
And seven days seems pretty limited.
Right, that was just one for, um, the humidifi- dehumidifier coming in.
I'm looking at the CPC application, and it does require three quotes.
It does?
Yes.
I remember having to do that for the foundation and the roofing, and the foundation is what had given us trouble, and then it did it again in the end.
So ultimately, we could approve this ARPA funding now based on these quotes, or wait and end up spending more CPC money?
Correct. And, and having to wait for a town meeting to get it approved, so now I'm looking at May, if they don't do another special town meeting in February.
I miss money.
Well, after all the other work that's been done, it'd be a shame to have this.
We had the Boy Scouts come through, and they were phenomenal. The parents came through, they, they had asked questions and everything, and it was after that that we had realized that. Thank goodness they were young kids, they're not big strapping.
Has our building inspector been involved in, in this process?
In this one, no. Um, he would be when the permits are being pulled.
Do you have available funds for that?
Yes. Contractor is covering them.
It says permits.
It's part of that, yes.
What's the committee want to do?
Well, it's just a shame it doesn't, uh, because it would qualify for the CPC funds, and, you know, we did meet. I don't know when this all came about, but we met, we meet specifically when there's an interest, and sometimes it's pulled together very quickly, like, and that's exactly what happened to approve the two, the, the match for the bike and the cone, uh, the sign for Conan. But if it's structural and there's safety concerns, I mean, I, um, that's what concerns me. And so, anyone coming in, like the contractor, did he say they shouldn't, those stairs shouldn't be used, and-
No, we have, um, four-by-fours supporting everything up. So we are supported so that we can go back in and continue working in there, but it's, it's not a long-term solution.
I know, I'm just asking.
Yeah.
I mean, if we waited for CPC, could they project that and say this would be, this would, this remedy would-
Right.
Would last, you know, be good until-
But they'd be good another hundred years. I mean, the house is in eighteen twenty-seven, and I do believe these are not the original, um, lolly columns in there.
Is the humidifier part of the strategy for stabilizing this?
Well-
Or is that an additional?
It was additional protocol, or, um, thank you. It was-
Thank you.
A wa- way, way back, there was discussion of, of dehumidifier being put in there, into the basement, and I thought it had gone through CPC to do it, and there's nothing done in the basement for that. Um, we have, would have to have special wiring done in there, um, to, for that unit alone to be down there. There's already a nice box, Whitley, Dan Whitley Incorporated came in and they, there's a beautiful box in there for all the other stuff, but actual plug for that.
So, so the electrical is for the dehumidifier, and the other things are for the structural-
Correct.
Problems with the columns?
Yes.
And the urgency, I'm assuming, is the columns?
Yes. I mean-
We are planning, I believe, on having another special town meeting right after the first of the year. I mean, if they were separate projects, I'm sure it could be separated if people have any concerns about it. But, I mean, the majority of the work is, um, eleven thousand dollars is pretty much the structural problem.
And according to their form, three quotes are requested.
Yes, for CPC, right? Do we have a motion? I mean, I'll make a motion to, and get it going if you want.
Go ahead.
A motion to approve the ARPA application for the historical commission, an amount of, somebody help me out here.
Twelve thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars?
Yeah.
To be, to be paid out as reimbursement, as invoices are received?
That would be great.
Is there, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved.
Thank you very much.
Question in regards to that policy. Invoices as received, that means pay as, never mind, I'll clarify it later. I don't want to keep-
I'm, I'm taking that.
You will get, you will get a letter from the town administrator's office with a purchase order number.
Correct.
So when you can use that to procure the services, when they invoice you, you turn that invoice in with that-
I give the, um, just like I did before with the CPC.
Not them paying a, a service out yet, them getting the invoice, and then getting, sending the invoice and getting the funds.
Getting the funds. So you guys would still be going through the warrant and seeing the, on there?
Correct, and it, it's important that you reference that purchase order number, so everything ties together.
Yep.
Who seconded that?
Francine did.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna go get Chris. This Dexter, but, um, I think he went together. And that was a very thorough application, by the way. We do have a few other ARPA ones on here. There's the water, oh, there's a water one, there's also, um-
But that's that one point eight million. Didn't we already address that?
Yeah, I thought we already addressed that.
Yeah, and there was, yeah, another one, the E-code for the planning board. Did we already address that one too? I, I-
I think it's an additional-
I defer to the chair.
This is just for planning, yeah.
On the planning board, yeah, I think it's additional.
So they may have additional expenses for E-code that we don't know about.
Thanksgiving.
Yeah, you do, thank you. All right, let's, uh-
So we resolved the Clark Chapman, we didn't do anything else with, uh, ARPA?
So, we only have two others, I think, on our list here. Um, Ed, you told me you weren't quite ready to vote on the finance, um, package yet, software package?
No, we still have to find time to actually, uh, contact, and then at least with one of the vendors, uh, go to a local town to talk with someone that's been using the product.
Okay. Can I ask a question about it, though? Do you mind if I just, so is that, um, seems like a pretty expensive price tag? Is, this is, um, is this a purchase of the system? Is this a, uh, is this an ongoing charge? Like, how is this gonna work in terms of the financial software? And does it involve the assessor offices? Is it pretty much between treasurer and accountant?
Would include the assessors if they wanted to come into it.
Yeah.
Uh, the other factor, you can say it's a purchase, however, with any software that's out there, you have ongoing-
You're purchasing the license.
Yeah, but they, you have an ongoing annual support class.
There's various modules, obviously, to this.
To both of them.
To both of them, yeah.
Absolutely. And probably, I mean, the biggest difference in probably the two is Vadar does not have an HR, uh, module of their own, so you have to go out and use a, another, uh, party for their, for the HR payroll module. Uh, Springbrook has their own.
Okay, so are we anticipating voting on this, like, in December? Hopefully, maybe? We want to be able to, on, on the financial one, to, to put this forward so that we can, I mean, we want to get it going. It would take a good six months of conversion, right? So the ideal would be-
It'd be ideal, however, things keep coming up as a pri- other priorities for the financial team, so.
Yeah, I understand. But I mean, with the idea to try and put something into place as a new financial system for-
July first.
The July first fiscal year.
Correct.
That, you know, so I mean, we just, we need to also just be clear in terms of our, our demands of priorities upon you. Yes, I understand your point. And this was a recommendation that you had put into your original contract, that your, the, your current contract about-
Right.
Financial software and all that. I just think we just gonna have to remember that, because at this point, if we're down, here we are, have, you know, we, we subtracted one twenty-eight, I mean, we're down to three hundred and something thousand, which, we just have to remember that. We just have to be careful about what else is coming at us here. Okay, we have one more, I think, tonight on the ARPA. If we'll just move to that one, and this is from the planning board again, and this is for three thousand dollars for the E-code bylaws, and honestly, this one I'm a little bit unsure about, because I'm, having been on the bylaws committee and worked with Lucy when the whole E-code, E-three-sixty got proposed. I thought it was a comprehensive package. There was, there was a price, and then we increased it in order to include the zoning bylaws. And I know we've gone through a whole process on the general bylaws side, where the E-three-sixty people have gone through all of our bylaws, made their questions, comments on us. We've spent time saying yes, no, we agree, change it, don't change it, leave it alone. My understanding is- And so we're gonna get a final draft in January. Zoning has done that also with their bylaws, so I, I'm not quite clear, because it, it talks in here somewhere, I thought, I saw that there were three specific bylaws mentioned in the narrative here. Um, additional zoning amendments will be revised in twenty-three, stormwater, marijuana, accessory apartments, and affordable housing options. So that means that there's something that is new coming down the pike, just like general bylaws may have new bylaws at some point to amend. So this is something that is eventually they're going to do, I gather, but what confused me was on the scope of work on the bill here, or the invoice, it said, "Using the files provided by the town, general code will prepare a new zoning bylaw," uh, I'm sorry, wrong, wrong, sorry. Uh, "The town code will be removed and replaced with a new zoning bylaw to be created using twenty-two files submitted by the town in September twenty-two." And, and I guess, I just thought that that had already been done.
Is that the work that we've already done?
I thought that had already been done, and I know they've had their consultant working on, you know, working with planning board to do them.
Yeah, I mean, I've sat through these E-code revision meetings.
Thought the E-code thing had, had included their bylaws, so do we know?
No, I know. Let me sit down with Lucy and see what she says, and, you know, and then sit down with, uh, Paul Demon, so. There may be just, there may be some disconnect here.
I'm just wondering if there's just a-
Let me see if I can get to the bottom of it.
Yeah, just a crossing time period here or something. Um, yeah, because the, the invoice is coming from the person, the same person we dealt with at E-three-sixty. And that was part of the original package. Yeah, so I think, you know, I don't know that there was any number of bylaws limiting anything, and, and when we talked to them, we told them that we were gonna probably have a special town meeting. There would be bylaws coming at them now for things that they hadn't, you know, necessarily seen, and they said, "Fine, just get them to us before January, so we can put them in a manuscript for you to look at in January." Right, and then they'll use existing bylaws as placeholders for future- Right. Uh, revisions. So, yeah, it's not- I don't, I don't understand. Not clear on here. So I, I would be personally in favor of getting more clarification as well. Um, if somebody would like, uh, make a motion on that, we'll, we'll come back to it, you know, once we have more information from Lucy, I would think.
I'll move.
Anybody? Motion?
What do we vote?
Motion to, to-
To table?
The table?
To, to not deal with it tonight, yeah, until we have more information.
If you just table it.
Okay, we'll just, okay.
I have a question about-
Yeah.
Number thirty-three, the water department for one point six million. Shh, isn't that the-
That was their magical request.
I know, but, I mean, A, do we need to continue to carry it, but B, isn't that really that extra, that second round that we already voted on in there?
Yeah, no, and I think one of the things I want to do, um, you know, we had the request item in there, we need, and it, it's showing up on my, my other tracker, my decision tracker in terms of the actual amounts that we're approving, um, versus the requests, because we haven't gone to the exact amount of the request on all of them. So we might need to think about revising the tracker just a little bit, um, or taking out that column, I don't know. It, it's helpful to have that column, though, I think.
Well, no, I like it, but I, I mean, they did ask for the one point six, but then ultimately what got approved was that second, in my mind, it's one hundred eighty-two.
This is just showing the applications coming into us, and have they been, you know, did we acknowledge them? Have they been given their, you know, once they've been approved?
So perhaps on this, we approve it, but then add a note-
Yeah.
That it was approved at a lesser amount.
We could, we could do that.
Otherwise, it looks like we, we still have something to do on it.
Correct, okay, very good point. Yep, we can do that.
Um, before we move on, I just want to clarify something for myself, and for, um, I had, I was notified by an applicant from round two that, um, their understanding of getting their ARPA funding was they had to spend the money and then provide the receipt to, um, be reimbursed, but that was not my understanding of how-
Is it a government entity or a private?
Private.
So the same, it'd be the same scenario. They can-
They can produce-
They can use the purchase order.
They can use the purchase order, okay.
To get the, the work, and if the work requires payment ahead of time, then they submit an invoice saying, "This is what I ordered, here's the purchase order," once it's, like, COD.
Okay.
Once it's paid, and then the town will go okay.
So it'll be the same system that we just put in place for the Clark Chapman House?
Correct.
So the purchase order-
Yeah.
Submit that. They don't have to pay anything, though, they just provide the purchase order? I guess I think it's a confusion.
Reference the purchase order number.
Into this, there's a difference between an invoice, because they invoice you once you've actually ordered the goods.
Mm-hmm.
And a quote, which is just a quote.
Quote's not gonna work.
Yeah.
Yeah, they actually have to commit, to sign the, hey, I have a letter of authorization from the town purchase order, twenty-three dash such and such, authorizes me out to X amount. Here's the quote to go with that. They reference it, then it comes down, and in that quote, if it says fifty percent due in order to order, then the town would only cut fifty percent.
In that quote, if they got the quote?
Right, because that's initiating the order.
That makes sense.
Now you're getting back to quotes again, so you're getting me all confused.
It's a form of issue.
An invoice is you've actually ordered the goods.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, so they're coming to us-
What do you call it when I have a piece of paper that says, "I want to order this," but they're not gonna give it to me until I get a fifty percent deposit?
It's a purchase order, no? That would be an invoice.
It's something coming from the vendor.
Be an invoice.
A COD or-
Well, it'd be a, that would be an invoice for fifty percent.
There you go.
Now you get, now you just get into, now, do they have to pay that to get reimbursed? And prove that they've paid it?
But we just didn't-
My stance is, for all the private citizens, it's been, get, get the work done, get the invoice, and then we pay it, or vice versa.
Yeah, I mean, I think the-
I'm thinking of the driveway and what we just did with the clerk.
Right. Yeah, that- Because we, yes, we did it.
But that was work, that was services, that wasn't like, um, equipment.
People weren't paying out first, though.
So I'm going to the private ones that we did. So the other one, we did a fixed amount to be relea- that should just be released for expenses already incurred, that they already submitted documentation that they already spent out of pocket, and then there was a balance on there that they had to develop the plan going forward and say, "Okay, well, this, I want to do this, and here's the, I, here's the invoice, or I'm gonna do this, but they won't do it without the money. Here's the documentation for it, to get the money."
And then maybe the question to clarify, so when, when somebody, like, for example, Good Eats To Go, when they presented their, Betsy presented her invoice, I guess, for the sandwich station, she had not paid for that.
Actually, she had.
Okay, well, find me one that had been paid for.
Yeah, I guess that's my question, so, yeah.
Yeah, the point is, we would assume that most people coming here don't have-
Don't have the funds.
The cash flow to be able to pay that upfront, but they're showing us that they have made an arrangement, they, they've committed to buying X for X amount of price. They come to us to cut the check, and I think you and I had talked about, we didn't necessarily want to get into sending check to company X, but we wanted it to come back to the ARPA applicant to then go pay their vendor, no? I mean, they're, we're not sending it to X Y B's supply company. We're giving it to Betsy to go pay her supply company. Is that not right?
I would pay the vendor.
Okay, now I'm gonna turn it around.
Well, just tell us what you're doing. Just tell us how it's working.
I'm actually, I'm actually requiring them to submit the invoice and the form of payment, whether it's a canceled check or, uh, credit card statement or what have you.
Now, what about in a scenario where they don't have the means to front the lunch?
Yeah, I wouldn't, yeah.
Well, what about, has that come up?
What about this? Whether it's two years or five years from now, we get audited. And they say, "Okay, uh, I see an invoice for this, or a quote for this."
Well, they've gotta come back-
Prove that they actually got it.
That's why you make the che- well, you make the check out to the, you've got, right, to the vendor, so that canceled check matches up to that quote. I mean, unless you want to go on site and do inspections.
Or after they've, if you're doing it the other way, where the check goes to the applicant, then when they have actually.
But that won't stand up for an audit.
I wouldn't wanna see the money go into an individual person.
Unless we specifically did that, like, Bishistas, that's, that's the vote, the way that went.
Yeah.
And then for Good Eats, a portion of that vote went to her.
Went to her.
Because her application had more than enough backup to justify that dollar amount.
Correct.
But going, yeah, going for, I, I thought all the, maybe I could be wrong, maybe I'm not remembering all of them. But it was, it, it's supposed to be a reimbursement, but we understand that you may not be, the person may not be in a position to front that cash. But you're gonna go buy this block, and this block costs $500, and you're getting from A, B, C. Here's the invoice, that once it's paid, they will release it to you. So we cut the check to that vendor, closes out our circle. And then if it doesn't show up, that's on them to tell us, I guess.
So I guess, has there, have there been any issues in terms of people being able to pay upfront and get the reimbursement thus far? I mean, from the private business group?
That that I've heard of.
Okay. Because I guess the assumption on my part briefly was that if people are needing to come to us because they don't have the cash flow to, to do the purchase, then how are they gonna pay upfront?
Right. Which is why we created this system with the purchaser, but we didn't want cash just going out to, to any of the six, the 700 citizens and.
Right.
Then you shouldn't be using the term reimbursement. Reimbursement is just like.
Very specific.
Me going out to the store and buying something because I can't, I need it immediately for work or get it. I come back, I have to turn in the original receipt. If it was bought on a credit card, I have to turn in my statement.
Yeah. I get that. But it, but if, if one of the things they need to buy is a 20 cent item, and they just go pay for the ca, I don't know.
So at this point in time.
I'm, I'm looking for specific guidance here.
Yeah.
Well, you didn't pose the question. Okay, it came from, so are the two of you in cahoots? Did you say Joy asked this question and see what I could get? So I don't know what guy didn't you meet over there.
I told her to ask the board. She already asked me.
I've been at, I.
I said, I'm, I'm doing what the board told me to do.
It was posed to me, so.
Well, and that is the way that we do it for normal, normal departments, right? I mean, it's, it's paid, they, they come and.
As incurred.
Vendor.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
ARPA.
Because, because, yeah, it's, it's us. We're getting the invoice. We pay it.
We're getting the invoice, we're paying it out. So they're, we're paying it before they actually.
I would say my guidance, Ed, is continue what you're doing to make sure it's audit proof.
Yeah. But at this point in time.
That's not what Joy wants to hear.
I don't think the townspeople know what that means. Um, I, you know, if we can go forward with saying that if people provide an invoice and a check is cut out to the vendor directly, I think that would, that makes it very clear.
No, we're not paying the vendor directly.
No?
No.
Okay.
No, absolutely not.
Okay, so then.
Reason why?
Hmm?
Explain why, just so everybody's clear. Why not? Workload, what? I mean.
Well, now, now we're gonna get into pieces of the puzzle of, okay, what, from the auditors of, you know, why are you paying this vendor? If it happens to be over $10,000, where's the procurement process?
Mm-hmm.
We're gonna need W9s from the vendor.
Right. So at this point in time, you are paying applicant X.
Correct.
That's where it's.
As, on a reimbursement basis, which means.
You're making them pay.
They ordered the goods.
Yeah.
They got invoice for the goods, and they proved to us that they've paid for the goods.
Okay, that's where I have a problem.
That's kinda counterintuitive for why they gave the money.
That, that was not my understanding of what our process was. That, that's what I'm saying.
And the, and the other thing is, we've already done it that way. I mean, with the church.
Yeah.
Because they went, we, the, the, we, the night we approved it, three days later, we got the bill because they did the work and it was done. And we paid the vendor. We paid the contractor.
Did we? I don't know.
I don't believe so.
I don't think we did.
What did we do with Bishistas, though?
That was to them.
That was a loss of revenue.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
So we cut the check directly to the business.
We'll have to take a look on, on the next, um, I'll look on the next ARPA one. I, I think we did not pay the vendor on the church. I think we paid.
I think the church.
I thought we paid the church directly.
I think we were paying the applicant, as long as we had proved that the bill had been paid on that one, I'm pretty sure. On the others.
That had been paid, or there was an invoice. I thought it was just an invoice.
If you're an organization, you know, I'm just gonna use the church because that's the example we have, that doesn't have the 22,000 to pay for it. And so you're using the ARPA, you're asking for the ARPA money, and we're saying, yes, do this. But we're saying, you still gotta come up with 22,000 to pay it, and then we'll give it back to you. I, hypothetically, the church probably has millions of dollars, but I'm, I'm just, some of the.
They definitely don't.
But I'm just saying, some of these other examples out there.
No, I agree, it's counterintuitive. But I, I don't recall us paying a vendor on that. I.
I got you.
I'm not positive on.
But wouldn't it make sense to?
Just tell me specifically and vote on it what you want us to do.
Okay. So instead of paying a vendor, would it make sense for the ARPA to pay the invoice, give the money to the applicant, to pay the invoice, and then they have to have a receipt or else no more access to ARPA funds? I mean, I don't.
Back, back up, because you just crushed your own case when you said they have to have a receipt. They have to have a receipt, that means they paid for it.
No, with after the fund, after, after they receive the ARPA funds.
They get the invoice. They come in with the invoice, they haven't paid, said, here's the invoice, I need to pay this. You make the check out to the, to the applicant. The applicant then deposits it, because they'll have to, or I guess they could sign it over to the, however that works.
Yeah.
Goes out, and then they get, they get the stamped receipt that they then have to submit to close out the file. Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah. Receipt, picture of item? I don't know.
And again, there's 351 communities in this state. This, we cannot be the first ones trying to deal with this.
Yeah.
Probably not.
Yeah, I'm not sure how other communities have, have dealt with this. Um, it seemed, let's, let's, hmm, do we need a decision tonight?
I'm guessing there's some sort of.
There must be some question.
No, I, I, no, I.
Okay.
God, I don't think there's anything pressing. I just wanted clarification.
We could, we could make it the process of, okay, submit the invoice, we'll give you the check. Before we process anymore of your requests, you have to come back with.
With the receipts.
Receipts, yeah.
With the receipt.
Yeah.
Proof of, the proof of having.
I don't know.
Having paid the.
That work?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I think that, that at least allows people to, to move a little bit easier on, on some of these requests, then. Okay. All right.
Speaking of moving along, next.
We got that. All right. We're, everybody in agreement with that?
I'm good with that. Uh, do, do you?
Not here getting any opposition to that? All right. Moving on. Um, I think we're done with ARPA for tonight. Any other business that can't wait until our December 6 meeting?
Yes.
What?
I have some. This is just informational purposes only. Three, four, five. Francine? So I, just, like I say, I believe that if you, you should be able to measure something in order to figure out where it's going. So coming out of finance, uh, last week, the meeting, I just took a look today to see who's at, um, free cash certified. So this is, it's double sided and it's in color, but it's, this is not town paper. I marked mine up, but you can have, you can have it when I get done. Um, so, so far, of the 351 communities, 184 have already certified their free cash. That's 52% of the state. Um, with the average amount of time it takes to certify free cash of 99.4 days. Then that's on page five. Going to page six is us. Southampton's our historical history going back to 2010. And historically, it takes us 173 days, which is roughly, roughly twice the state average. Um, and just for point of reference, our average free cash is $383,000. It's just information. This isn't anything. I think we, if I look at our past 10 years, um, we're 170 days instead of the full 12 that are there. But I, you know, it's, it's a mark in time that we can use to move forward, not necessarily this year, but next year. So if we stay on track here, I'm expecting free cash will be certified on December 20th. And then the last page is just, I, for us to help, not necessarily help, but again, if it's measurable. And there's a colored gray there in the shade, and I realize it didn't print out that well. But the, these are the seven components that go into the free cash, which also then rolls into the tax rate and, and everything else happening. And some of these were due on September 30th. Not every community does it, but as you saw by the previous five pages, 184 communities have already done all this. And a lot of them are local. So what, what I'm proposing is this is our internal tracker that, I mean, part one is done by the town accountant. Part two is done by the treasurer, collector, and the town accountant, as they go through these things, that we, that we give them the sheet or through Ed, give them a sheet and just pop in the dates there when they're done and upload it. And so that, we have a means to track this and just monitor it going forward.
See how we can.
Makes sense.
So we can improve ourselves.
Could you, have you, do you have any idea why it's taking twice as long for our town?
Well, I think there's a lot of unique things going on. It's Bradley's first full year. Yeah. It's Bradley's first full year to go, go around this whole thing. And we're short an accountant. I mean, really, the trigger was in the finance meeting when, when Bradley said recon's only up till February. So you've, so that, that raised a red flag with me that we've got four months that he hasn't even looked at. There may be absolutely no issues, and they may sail straight through. But the likelihood that with next week being Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
That this is all gonna get done by, um, and this is just a piece. And I know we're looking to get free cash certified and when we're thinking about it. But it's just a means for us to track.
Sure. Yeah. Good benchmarks to, to understand where we are in comparison to other towns and how we can maybe improve some of our own internal processes here. So, all right.
I have another question about, um, remaining business. Is there any update to our discussion from the previous time relative to the building inspector?
I was just gonna ask that.
I'm gonna involve executive session.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair, can we get a scheduled executive session in before that expires on November 23rd? It happens tomorrow.
Yikes. Like, tonight? We can't do that, right?
Well, I can't, I can't, I can't tell, there's further story, but I can't tell you that we've applied and that the, uh, the building commissioner will get an appeal hearing in January.
That's in essence, an extension.
What's that?
Did you say the, the appeal hearing is in January?
January, correct.
So I'm saying, in essence, that's an extension.
Not really.
Well, it, it is because.
Is it?
Yes. He doesn't lose his status until he has the hearing.
Until he has the hearing, so.
He's on his last course, is what you had told me, right?
What's that?
You said he was on his last course, or is?
He is, he has his last test scheduled for the beginning of December.
Uh huh.
So I'll ref, I'll take that back. I would say that if the chair feels comfortable with a one-on-one explanation that he gets from town administrator, I'm happy to defer.
Yes, I am at this point in time. So just keep us posted on what happens after the test, hopefully. Hopefully we pass the test, right?
That's the easiest way.
Yeah. Okay. Moving on. Um, anything on COVID update, V O I P update, old business? V O I P, voiceover?
We think, we found the solution to the hunt groups. Uh, we had a nice, long conference call, I think it was last Monday, uh, on that. And, uh, the TPX contacted, well, Verizon actually gave us the information for TPX to send, uh, to, uh, Verizon to, uh, move the process forward. So that's where we are right now.
So we still need to schedule time for installation?
Verizon has to do some work. They won't charge us for the work, fortunately. Uh, but that has to be done first. But then, once that's done, and it doesn't sound like the whole, well, after dealing with Eversource on those ball hearings, I'll be careful what I say about Verizon. Uh, it doesn't sound like it would take very long for Verizon to do this. So we should be, in my opinion, be able to move forward with scheduling the actual training installation and porting.
What, what is your hope to do that? Is it realistic during December, or?
I'm hopeful that we'll get it done before the end of this calendar year.
Sure hope so. I mean, this has been a long time coming. These IT things are just complicated, to say the least. There's always some little glitch that we didn't know about that appears in here. So, all right, let's, let's hope that that can continue. Um, I don't know where we are with, uh, anything else on, on COVID. I know there's still a few tests around. I guess it would be good to know, um, looking at the tests that are, since I was standing out in the hallway, the COVID tests that are being handed out at the, um, the window out there. They're, they theoretically have an expiration date on them that has passed now. But I know some of these were extended.
They were all extended, I think.
They're all extended.
There should be a handout that's next to them.
Yeah. The handout should be there with them, too, I think.
They are extended.
It does have the date for the lot number for the expiration.
I think they've actually, I think it's almost, it might even be longer than nine months they got extended now.
Oh, really? Okay. All right. Just to note that. Okay, I think we are back at the point of the special town meeting.
And I, I have one more thing under.
Oh, you already proved it. Where was I?
Yeah. Well, you were here.
Well, I have one other thing under any other business, and it can get signed later. But we, uh, we went through the weights and measures thing about six weeks ago, but I, we never signed the contract with the state, so I just have a contract with the state.
Yes, okay. No, I agree. I, I meant to sign it. We'll sign it at the end, yes.
I think we're up to the remaining PCFs.
So I think we're up to the PCFs, exactly.
And I'll make a motion then to extend David Zagorsky's temporary interim principal assessor, um.
PCF.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. All right, motion passes.
The next two, this board's already approved.
Right, we've already approved on the.
And PPP just ratified them.
Right, okay, those have been done, all right.
I think the next five are all fire department. Want me to read them?
Sure, go ahead.
Richard Blumstrom, captain firefighter, paramedic as needed, non-benefited, promotion 3270. And we have documentation about promoting two people to captains. Gina Favada, if I said that right, new hire firefighter, paramedic as needed, non-benefited, 2643 an hour. Cynthia Morton, captain firefighter, paramedic as needed, non-benefited, 2578 an hour. Jacqueline Babiac, EMTB as needed, non-benefited, 1692 an hour. And Jacqueline Plantier, firefighter as needed, non-benefited, 1425 an hour. And that should be, does that, does the actual PCF say 15 in January or is this? That should be.
It doesn't right now, but it should say that. I mean, it should.
It shouldn't say 1425 unless it's only between now and January.
Yes. Yeah, for Jacqueline Plantier, it's 1425 an hour, so note that that would be. I mean, she's on board through January, up until then, that would take effect for.
Let me see if I can find the actual.
The PCF says 1425.
PCF says 14 and a quarter.
1425, yeah.
So we just want to make a note that as of January, we would be okay with this going to the.
And what's the current, is it current 1425?
I thought it was 15 already.
I thought it was.
No, January, January.
January 1st, it becomes 15 now.
So that, it's 50, wasn't it 57 increments? So 14, 15?
75 cents.
There you go.
Okay, so.
So I will, for that particular one, maybe we'll do that one separately, so I'll just do the first four for now.
Okay, all right, do you have a second?
I do have a question.
Let's have a second.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
All right, my second one is on the, the captain firefighter, paramedic. You have two people here. One is hourly rate is 3179 and the other one is 2478. What's the difference? We're looking at Cynthia Morton and Richard.
Richard.
Bloom, Blumstrom. I mean, I would guess it would be.
Well, one's a captain, one's just a firefighter, paramedic.
Oh, she's a captain as well.
Both firefighter captains.
They're both being promoted to captains.
Nope, they're, they're both lieutenant firefighter, paramedics going to captain firefighter, paramedics. So unless it's the.
That's a very significant.
Yeah, that's a huge difference.
25 versus 32. Good, good catch, Francine. Do these go to PQB?
He did.
Is Cynthia Morton a new hire?
No, I don't, let's say.
The effective date is October 1st.
October 1st, so I don't think so.
No, she's getting a promotion. She says, existing status is lieutenant firefighter, paramedic.
And they're both.
And the other one's captain, you know, going to firefighter, paramedic.
So Mike, I'm only speculating here, but my guess is, and I suggest we hold these off and ask for clarification, is that he's going to have additional certifications that based on the fire chief's scale of 50 cents in a dollar for this and that, will get up to that number, but I think it should be publicly stated as to why we're paying roughly, what, $4 difference between genders?
No, it's.
It's more, 25 to 32.
Seven dollars.
Seven dollars, but they're both currently, they're currently lieutenant firefighter, paramedic, both of them, both going, both going to captain.
Yep.
And what is, let's see what their current rates are.
2478 for Morton.
30, yeah, and 3170 for Blumstrom.
Yeah, so he is being consistent by applying a dollar apiece. The question is, why?
Why?
What's the underneath as, why is there the discrepancies to start with?
He gets a dollar more, but yeah, their base salary is very different. I mean, their present salary is very different.
Present salary is quite a bit different.
Which makes their.
Makes sense based on the clear positions, but not if they're going to a new level.
Yeah, let's ask for clarification on those. I'm fine holding off on this for another, another meeting, our next meeting.
So Richard and Gina were going to table?
Uh, Richard and Cynthia.
And Cynthia, I'm sorry.
Richard.
Blumstrom and Morton, right?
Correct. We're going to table those until we get clarification on the wage difference for the same existing position and the proposed promotion.
So I'll just amend my motion, include the other two, Richard, I mean Gina and Jacqueline Babiac, okay.
All right.
And I'll second the amendment.
Okay, all those in favor for Gina Favada and Jacqueline Babiac?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
And then the motion for Jacqueline Plantier, should we hold on that or just?
Yeah.
I mean, we can just say 1425 per hour with an increase in January 1 to 15.
That would be fine, then we don't have to have it back again?
Yeah.
Yep.
So that's my motion.
There's going to be a whole slew that are coming.
Pain here because we ran into this last year. I really believe we need the individual PCFs at this point in time, just to track everything that's going on, so. I'm sorry, but yes, 1425 is correct now.
Okay.
So hold on to three of them then.
For January 1st, a new one should be submitted because last year somehow he submitted the blanket for everybody and it just became a nightmare after that.
And they're going to have to do it for everyone else who are in that situation then.
Right.
Okay, okay, and are all these existing employees, I know the first two are, but what about this one? Is there a previous?
Hold on.
No, this is a new one, because it's a probationary firefighter.
Yeah, so I just, I don't know if it's going to hold them up.
Yeah.
I mean, I know they're having a hard, you know.
Well, we could, I mean, we could approve this one at the 1425 and then have him submit another.
Right, it's what he's asking for.
All right, then I'll leave it at that, 1425 an hour, agree. You just let him know though, that he should submit another one for the beginning of the year.
Right, so we'll have a second on that motion? Somebody?
I seconded it.
Francine's second, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Might I suggest just for the expediency of our next meeting, that the chief be encouraged to perhaps just submit a one pager with a side-by-side pay scales? To justify everything and advance to the TA, and if on paper it makes sense, he doesn't need to come in for the half hour.
Yeah, for those two people, for the, the two that he's promoting, okay, and we have two other.
Unless it doesn't make sense to the TA, then he should come in.
Yeah.
Okay, last two, Charles Dalton on call, this is the highway department, Charles Dalton on call, less than 20 hours an hour. 20 hours, part-time, non-benefited at $15 an hour. And Colby Nato on call, he has CDL, plow truck driver, non-benefited, $30 an hour.
Yeah. Any move? Anybody second?
I'll second.
Francine's second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion approved. All right, very good. I think that takes care of everybody on that list, am I right?
Yes.
Yeah, we just have one, two, three, Christina.
So we're pulling off, yeah, we're pulling off.
Just two of them, but one we'll have to see again. Cynthia Morton and.
Richard Blumstrom.
Right. Okay. Got it. Got it, okay, next we have the warrants. Francine, you've got a lengthy list, you've been busy signing away.
Oh, this isn't, yeah, this is about a month's worth.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a vendor warrant, W23-14V for a debit of 6240. We have payroll warrant, P23-15 for $312,357.19. We have a payroll deduction warrant, PD23-15 for $50,995.72. We have another payroll deduction warrant, there was an omission there, PD23-15A for $9.24. A vendor warrant, W23-16 for $388,036.09. A vendor payable warrant, W23-16A for $1,000. A payroll warrant, P23-17 for $314,509.78. Payroll deduction, PD23-17 for $51,646.61. Payroll deduction warrant with retirement, PD23-17A for $183,677.87. A vendor payable warrant, including the Hampshire Regional Quarterly Assessment, W23-18 for $1,561,501.90. Payroll warrant, P23-19 for $326,089.42. Payroll deduction warrant, PD23-19 for $53,808.95. A vendor warrant, W23-20 for $12,219.79. And a vendor warrant, W23-20A for $142,775.
And just to let you all know, on that last warrant, the 2320A, in case you're wondering what we paid KP Law $103,000 for, because two of you already asked me that question. That is, we wired them the funds to purchase 354 College Highway and they put it into their escrow and then they distributed it at the closing. So, no, we didn't have any, that didn't cost the bylaws or or liability settlement or anything else that was for the acquisition of 354 College Highway.
When I saw that one. Just, just an observation, mostly on 2320, as we've done the dog control, you know, agreement with Westfield Animal Shelter. We've had one, one large bill here, the 1273, so that might be a monthly or quarterly payment or something.
Yeah, I would, I would say it's like a quarterly payment because they, they had not billed us from July 1st to this point in time. That is actually the first set of invoices we've received from them.
Okay. And I think.
And no, we didn't hold them for payment or anything else. They just hadn't sent, they were behind and hadn't sent them to us.
Right, yeah, I was hoping we weren't having to pay a lot of people not picking up their animals or something, okay. And I do appreciate on 2318, the vendor warrant, just having the breakdown of KP Law in terms of their work with the the Greenway and the Affordable Housing Bylaw, and that's really just helpful just to see how much, how much some of those are costing us, you know, in terms of their their work on some of our legal agreements here.
Well, they're done that way also because of the fact that they're paid out of separate accounts for those too, so, you know, the those were approved, including legal costs, so, you know, that is not coming out of just the general legal expense account.
Correct, yeah, they're, they're out of a separate fund altogether.
Correct.
Right, yeah, because I know in the Greenway acquisition, we had built in legal, legal money into that grant.
Correct, same, same thing for like the procurement of 354 College Highway. And I think we've got a couple other grants in there that are also separated out due to that.
Right, and I think I have just one last observation, is on that same warrant as for the water operating expenses, City of East Hampton, $7,800. I assume that's purchase of the water from East Hampton this.
That would be my assumption too, yes.
This $5,000 to the City of East Hampton for fire.
For ambulance.
Ambulance.
Yeah.
In two separate warrants.
So we're still having.
I know, $5,000?
Well, yeah, one has two and the other has three. Payments of $5,000.
500 apiece, but they add up.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so four calls, one month, or five calls, whatever, one month.
There's actually four, four under building inspector expenses, there were four entries for 240 apiece to Ron Lauren.
That would be his monthly.
Car stipend.
Car stipend, use of his own vehicle.
Okay. All right, if no other questions on that. I think we basically just have minutes to approve, the August 30 minutes.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Anybody second that?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Anybody have any comments, issues on them? I did not see any myself, but.
Just as an observation, in the terms that we asked, that we were talking about who the ever source reps were. Joe Mitch was our rep, Mike Rosenberg is no longer, he also did the presentation. He's not in that department anymore. He's working for another department, so we won't see him again.
Uh huh, unfortunate, okay. And just interestingly, in these minutes, on page six, fire EMS, Cynthia Morton, part-time, as-needed paramedic EMS assistant, so. Anyway, just interesting.
Yes.
This is the person that we did a, we did a.
We just held.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we did a PCF for back in August, part-time, non-benefited, as-needed paramedic EMS assistant.
Yep, that might explain the lower rate.
So sometime, yeah, but sometime between August and before this came in, she got, there should be another PCF moving her to a lieutenant.
There should be something else, yeah.
Yeah.
Fast track.
Yeah, so that's, that's the other thing, yeah, so anyway, we have a motion, I think, and a second on the minutes?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll abstain.
Minutes are approved, thank you.
I'm abstaining, sorry.
Sorry, missed that.
Okay.
For.
We actually, most do also waive the right of first refusal on that East Street parcels? Or is that?
We, we may at some point in time after the other.
Okay, we have time, we have time.
Yeah, the other boards have not pronounced themselves on it yet.
And just to let you know, because I had to check up on this, we have another one I'll send out. That wants to, yes, that wants to be removed from
Chapter.
From Chapterland, so two different paths. If they request to be removed, the town still has the right of first refusal, however, you don't have a bona fide offer to match. So it gets into one of those things, if the town's really interested, town would get an appraisal on the property. Property owner would get an appraisal on the property. You'd look at the two of them, are they close? Move forward, are they not close? Well, now you get into a third appraisal, which is supposed to be shared in class between the town and the property owner.
All right.
And the.
Does this parcel happen to be one that's on the radar for one of these new buildings we're going to build? Then let's just skip it, no.
I don't know that we know that. We'll see when we come up.
But I was thinking of parking my Mercedes there, John.
Yeah, right.
You live in West Springfield, you don't drive a Mercedes.
Okay, I think we have a couple documents to sign, but while we're doing that, I think we can adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, John and Francine, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, we adjourned at about almost 9:24.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.